We like Atlanta have been hurting. Our manpower has been concentrated in one case, which takes them off other cases. So we're asking for financial assistance and technical assistance.
During the first rash of killings beginning in September, scenes like this one in Buffalo's police homicide office dominated the news.
You don't have to give me your name, but I would like to have it in case we do locate this man to make sure we're talking about the same guy or not.
There have been four shootings and three fatal stabbings of black males in the greater western New York area since September. And although the killings no longer make headlines here, black leaders say the fear factor is still very high.
The fear is very much alive and people are beginning to say that if the law cannot protect us, we'll try to protect ourselves.
That's just what happened today in Atlanta as police cracked down on a vigilante group known as the Self-Defense Patrol.
Surrounded. A joint hand.
While these armed men were arrested, other peaceful citizens continued the weekly search for young victims of the child killer. And Sam Ford has that story.
Don't get too far down in there now, let's kind of keep you in the line.
When James Dutton isn't leading searches, he's often doing other community work. He's a retired Atlanta businessman who has missed only two of the 23 searches.
When our children are being snatched and killed, we just can't sit at home when there's something that we can do, we have to get out and try.
That's also how Maddie Jackson feels. She works at a mental health center during the week, but with three exceptions, this mother of eight natural children and two foster children has been in the woods every Saturday morning.
I would use all my energy out in the woods instead of trying to create a whole lot of problem within the city. And a lot of people's fear that this would bring on a racist type problem in the city. But I can see people's using up all that hate and anxiety out in the woods, feeding back bushes and trash, walking through the creeks, looking on the rocks and things. They're getting it all out of the system.
The searchers have found only one child's remains so far, but authorities say they have turned up helpful evidence in the child investigations as well as other cases. But two children are still on the missing list and search organizers say until they are found and the child case is solved, the volunteers will be here on Saturdays. Sam Ford, CBS News, Atlanta.
The stockade at Fort Benning, Georgia is where Army Private Joseph Christopher of Buffalo is now being held. The interest in Christopher as a possible suspect in the four 22 caliber killings in western New York developed after a stabbing incident occurred in these barracks. Lieutenant Colonel Robert Brown charged Christopher with attempting to murder a black soldier.
It was alleged that Christopher took a small knife and attacked a black soldier from the rear by grasping him around the throat and stabbing him in the rib cage and in the armpit.
Unprovoked?
Completely unprovoked.
Christopher's company captain, Marzine Sims, saw the FBI composite of the 22 caliber killer and said there was some resemblance to Christopher.
It's kind of rough sketch, but it could be.
What strikes you as being a possible resemblance?
His nose right there. On this one, his nose is something like that, I believe.
The four 22 caliber killings in the Buffalo area and the two brutal cabbie mutilation slayings occurred before Christopher reported for duty in November of 1980. The fatal stabbing of another black male and the assaults on two other black males occurred during Christopher's Christmas leave. This is where Christopher spent his six weeks of training in the army. The men here don't know what Christopher did before he enlisted or what he did during the time he was on leave around Christmas. That's what Buffalo investigators are here to find out. Rich Newberg, News 4, Fort Benning. Investigators lob it and rash will say only that this is one of 6,000 leads the DA's task force has evaluated. Sources very close to this investigation have told me that some reports now circulating in Buffalo may have already convicted Joseph Christopher in the press, although the man hasn't even been charged in the 22 caliber killing case. In a Columbus Inquirer newspaper article today, readers were told Christopher's name will not be published here unless he is charged with the 22 caliber killings. And Christopher's own Army-appointed attorney, Major Donald Morgan, told me today he won't even comment at all on the case for fear his client's chances for a fair trial on the attempted murder charge at Fort Benning would be jeopardized. Private Christopher is something of a mystery to many on base. He was never photographed with the rest of his battalion, apparently reporting for basic training after the group photos were taken. Those in his barracks say he attended church every Sunday, but that he allegedly stabbed a black soldier in an unprovoked attack before church one Sunday in January.
It was alleged that Christopher took a small knife and attacked a black soldier from the rear by grasping him around the throat and stabbing him in the rib cage and in the armpit.
Unprovoked?
Completely unprovoked.
DA Cosgrove has been under a lot of pressure to produce a suspect in the 22 caliber killings case. There have certainly been a lot of coincidences here involving Christopher, leading to a lot of speculation. Now it's up to Cosgrove to decide if the evidence is strong enough to link Christopher to the killings. Rich Newberg, News 4, Fort Benning.
Context of White Supremacy. Gusty Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Thursday, June 30, 2022. So I have been told. This is our weekly book club, our seventh study session on Catherine Pelanero, White Woman. Her book, Absolute Madness. We are picking up at the very beginning of Part Three, The Quiet Man. So Christopher, Joseph G. Christopher, will be identified by name and we'll start getting into some of his background and history and growing up and all of that information this week. The audio that we heard at the very beginning, again, one of our listeners, tracked down, Rich Newberg, is a white man reporter in the Buffalo, New York area, and he uploaded a lot of his coverage from 1980, 1981 of the 22 caliber killer case in Buffalo. And so those news segments are about where we are in the book when this mysterious soldier in Fort Benning, Georgia becomes a suspect in the killings and start getting into more details about why he was a suspect, how was he in the stockade for attacking a black male soldier down in Georgia and all of those details. All I can say is wow, remember that a white author wrote this book and remember that the title is Absolute Madness. Woof, that is deliberate, that will start to become apparent why this week. Also, you heard the portion where they talked about the so-called Atlanta Child Murders case, which was concurrent with this case. And that, to me, has been one of the more significant things that I've learned. These two cases were talked about together all the time back 1981, 1980. Somehow over the years, the Buffalo case has been totally forgotten and divorced from the Atlanta Child Murders. In fact, even most of the time when people talk about that case, they do not mention Buffalo at all. But that was a Buffalo news segment that segued into the Atlanta Child Murders and the search teams down in Atlanta over the weekends. That's how interconnected these cases are, not to mention Christopher was indicted in Georgia. Anyway, all of that said, more details to come. We will get started. Context of White Supremacy. Oh, make sure, I forgot to mention from last week, I thought it was so important, they mentioned Ernest Jones. He is one of the black male cab drivers who had his heart extracted and was killed. Sadly, he had some sort of tragic arrangement, sexual situation with a white woman named Zoe. She talked him into giving her his firearm before he was murdered. And then last week she talked about feeling guilty about this because she took the firearm and I believe gave it to some other dude that she was messing around with on the side. And then after he's been killed, oh, man, I left him all impotent. Hmm. Oh, Shorty's not with us anymore. That was his nickname, Mr. Jones. Shorty's not with us no more. Tragic arrangements. Now we will get started. Context of White Supremacy, Absolute Madness, Audio Segment One.
Part Three, The Quiet Man. I'm afraid I can't explain myself, sir, because I am not myself, you see. Lewis Carroll, Alice in Wonderland. Chapter 11. Christopher, Christopher, Christopher. There he goes again, thought Private First Class Corwin. The prisoner lay with his hands clutched to his head, rolling rhythmically from side to side in his bed as he cried again in a low, beseeching voice, "Christopher." PFC Corwin was a military police officer stationed at Fort Benning, Georgia. His current assignment was to stand guard round the clock on a fellow soldier, Private First Class Joseph Christopher, who was confined to the psychiatric wing at the Martin Army Community Hospital. PFC Joseph Christopher had been in the B-4 ward of the base hospital for a few days, where he was supposed to be was in the stockade. Private Christopher had been arrested by the military police on January 18, 1981 for allegedly stabbing another soldier. It was now April and prisoner Christopher's three months in military police custody had been eventful, to say the least. Christopher was in the stockade awaiting court martial when he stopped eating. His weight plunged by 32 pounds in a little over a month, necessitating medical treatment. That had been his first admission to the B-4 ward back in early March. He had spent four weeks in the hospital and was sent back to the stockade on April 3. He didn't stay long, however. He was readmitted to the psychiatric ward on April 10, this time following emergency treatment for a self-inflicted wound. That act of self-mutilation had prompted the army to classify Private Christopher as a suicide risk. As a result, an MP had to watch him at all times. PFC Corwin had to follow Joseph Christopher wherever he went. He had to escort him to and from meals, the latrine, and wherever else he might go on the ward, although Private Christopher rarely moved anywhere these days. A large portion of Corwin's shift entailed sitting in a chair by the prisoner slash patient's bed. Joseph Christopher slept a lot. He shuffled to the bathroom. Everything he did, on the rare occasions he did anything, seemed to be in slow motion. On the occasions when he did finally wake up, he would often go through this routine of holding his head in his hands and rocking back and forth in his bed, muttering, "Christopher, Christopher," in a plaintive moan. PFC Corwin's first name happened to be Christopher, but it was not Corwin that the patient slash prisoner was calling when he went into this routine. Joseph Christopher didn't even know the name of his guard, despite the fact that Corwin stood or sat right next to him, usually in a chair directly next to his bed, in eight-hour shifts, day in and day out, and despite the fact that Corwin had also guarded Christopher in the stockade and had intervened on occasion when he had conflicts with other prisoners. Private Christopher had never spoken to Private Corwin. Most of the time, Joseph Christopher didn't seem aware that anyone else was in the same room or even the same universe, for that matter. He seemed to dwell in his own head, which, based on his behavior, appeared to be a very desolate place indeed. When Joseph Christopher would go into whatever routine this was, the rocking and squeezing his head and calling Christopher over and over again in despair, it was apparently his own name he invoked in that mournful chant. So it came as a surprise to PFC Corwin when Christopher finally spoke to him. Corwin was sitting dutifully in a chair by the side of the bed when he noticed that the patient was awake and looking directly at him. "What's your name?" he asked. Private First Class Christopher Corwin. There was a pause. "PFC Corwin, do you realize I was a mass murderer in Buffalo?" Corwin didn't react. This wasn't the first time he'd heard a prisoner say something outrageous, and this was, after all, the psychiatric ward. When he finally responded, he said, "Christopher, I really can't believe that." "Well, I was," the prisoner slash patient said. "I refuse to believe that," Corwin said. "It's true." He spoke slowly, remotely. "I killed seven people in Buffalo and I killed some people in New York." Corwin shook his head. "I still don't believe you, Christopher. At ease, go back to sleep." A command of "at ease" in the military means relax. In this context, it meant shut up. The prisoner slash patient lay quiet. There was a long pause. Corwin noted the distant look on Christopher's face. Finally, Corwin said, "Christopher, I hope to God not. Why would you kill people?" "No reason." "I had no reason," he answered in the same slow voice. "I just did it." PFC Corwin wasn't sure what to think, either about the statements or Joseph Christopher himself. Christopher's first stint in the stockade had lasted 46 days, during which he had twice assaulted a fellow prisoner, made an escape attempt that involved trying to stab a guard in the eye with a pen, and had his nose broken and tooth fractured by guards as they fought to drag him off to a segregation cell. When he wasn't acting combative, he was acting weird. Christopher's mellow moments could be almost as unnerving as his erratic violence. He spent a good portion of his stockade time in administrative segregation or solitary confinement due to his unpredictable nature. Alone in his cell, he would sometimes spend his time quietly writing letters to his family or reading the Bible. Other times, he would sit and stare at the ceiling with a grin on his face, pointing his finger at the overhead light. That could go on for hours. Guards would overhear him laughing or carrying on a conversation, but when they looked, no one else was there. It was also during these times, when he appeared to be mentally elsewhere, that he would compulsively masturbate, which seemed all the more strange, because when he shared a cell with other prisoners, he would scold them for even talking about sex, partying, or anything else that offended his deeply religious sensibilities. There were times when Christopher sat still and silent on his bunk, staring down at the floor, looking crushed and despondent. Then there were times when he appeared normal, looking and behaving much like any other guy, maybe a bit quieter and more reserved than most, but a regular guy all the same. You just never knew what to expect with him, which is why guards and prisoners alike had learned to be cautious around Private Joseph Christopher or avoid him altogether when possible. His behavior could be so bizarre, so contradictory, and so utterly incomprehensible, there were more than a few people who wondered how the hell he had gotten into the army in the first place. They knew for certain that Private Christopher's problems, whatever they might be, were not a question of combat fatigue or post-traumatic stress disorder, at least not as a result of military service. Christopher had only been in the army since the previous November. He'd been arrested and thrown in the stockade after only two months as a soldier. He hadn't even made it out of basic training. This is why PFC Corwin was not at all sure what to make of Private Christopher's remarks about being a mass murderer. The prisoner slash patient said nothing else during the remainder of Corwin's watch. It was such an outrageous claim. And why was Christopher talking about having killed people so far away in Buffalo and New York? When they were in Georgia? It didn't make a lot of sense. Then again, nothing about Private Christopher made much sense. Corwin decided to report the conversation to his guard commander and let his superiors handle it however they saw fit. PFC Corwin was not the only person at Martin Army Community Hospital who had to report a strange conversation of late with Private Christopher. Captain Bernard Burgess was a staff nurse on the B-4 ward. On Friday, April 10, Captain Burgess had conducted an intake interview with Private Christopher upon his readmission to the hospital. The question-and-answer session had been fairly routine. Burgess, along with most of the staff in the hospital psych ward, was already acquainted with Joseph Christopher because of his very recent one-month stay in their facility. Burgess wanted now to gauge Christopher's state of mind, if he could. According to the emergency room report, Christopher had used a razor blade to make a 10-centimeter circumferential cut around the base of his penis. Suturing of the wound had required several stitches. Following treatment, doctors had him transferred to B-4 immediately for psychiatric evaluation. Burgess asked Private Christopher how he was feeling. He didn't get much of a response, which wasn't unusual when it came to this patient, although Burgess noted that Christopher seemed more alert than he had on some previous occasions. The captain let a silence ensue, hoping that the private would speak of his own volition about whatever was on his mind. Christopher appeared calm rather than agitated, and Captain Burgess hoped that if he didn't press, the patient might open up and talk about why he had injured himself. The psychiatric ward staff had learned the first time around that pressing Christopher for answers didn't work. He seemed very mistrustful of everyone. Maybe this time, Burgess hoped, the patient could communicate his thoughts and feelings a little better. After writing down all of the basic intake info, religion, next of kin, medical issues, Captain Burgess asked the patient if he had anything he wanted to add or if he had any questions. Christopher spoke in a soft voice. His affect was flat. He asked Captain Burgess if he was aware of some killings that took place in Buffalo or New York City that had been reported in newspapers and on TV. Captain Burgess replied, "No." In the same flat voice, Joe Christopher said, "When I was home on leave from December 18 to January 2, I killed some people." "How many?" Burgess asked. "A total of 13." "How did you kill them?" "I shot some with a gun and stabbed some others," the patient replied. "I know they knew I did it because my picture was in the newspaper." His voice remained soft and dull, his face unanimated. "Where did this happen?" Captain Burgess asked. "In Buffalo and New York City, Fifth Avenue. My friends said there was a picture in the newspaper that looked like me." Christopher said. "This happened while you were on leave?" "When I was on Christmas leave," Christopher said. "I did it because I felt that I had to. Something came over me and I couldn't control it." Burgess asked him to elaborate on what had compelled him, but the patient couldn't explain. Burgess thought for a moment. The last time Christopher was in the psych ward, Burgess recalled Christopher saying that stabbing the soldier in the barracks, the offense that had gotten him thrown into the stockade back in January, was the worst thing he had ever done in his life. He reminded Christopher of what he'd said then. "That wasn't the worst thing," Joseph Christopher answered. "This is the worst. I want to call the police and tell them I did it." Nurse slash Captain Bernard Burgess wasn't sure what to think. Christopher asked again if he could call the police. Burgess asked Christopher to wait in the hall. Once the patient exited the nurses' station, Burgess went and spoke to Captain Allen, the head nurse, and told him what Christopher had said, including that Christopher wanted to call the police in Buffalo or New York. Captain Allen instructed Burgess not to let the patient use the phone. Captain Allen would speak with his superiors and they'd address the situation on Monday. Burgess got Joe Christopher from the hall and brought him back to the nurses' station. He told Joe that he wouldn't be able to call the police right now. The patient looked blank and didn't argue. "I don't want to talk anymore now," Christopher said. Joseph Christopher got up and shuffled off into the hallway. Bernard Burgess did some paperwork. Burgess wrote down some details of their conversation, noting in his report that Christopher maintained the same dull affect throughout their entire interview. He noted, "Need to check out patient's story on Monday. Further information needed. Talk to patient again tomorrow." Lieutenant Dorothy Anderson was another nurse assigned to the B-4 psychiatric ward. On Saturday, April 11, Lieutenant Anderson wrote in her nursing notes that "patient slash Private Joseph Christopher" was reluctant to have her change the dressing on his wound. That was understandable. A male staff member took care of it and reported to Anderson that the wound appeared to be healing normally. Later in the afternoon, Nurse slash Lieutenant Anderson checked on Christopher and asked how he was doing. "What do you think is going to happen to me?" Christopher asked. "I just want to go back to my people." Lieutenant Anderson was unaware of anything he'd said the night before to Captain Burgess, but found Christopher's words understandable nevertheless, considering his predicament and his obvious psychological distress. She noted in her report that day that his affect was bland and flat, that he did not attempt to injure himself again, that he ate all his dinner and was cooperative, even helpful. He spoke little, which was, of course, not unusual, and she knew from experience it was best to let him speak if and when it suited him. Christopher had already let Lieutenant Anderson know that he did not trust her, which was in keeping with how he seemed to feel about everyone on the ward, staff and patients alike. She remained attentive and friendly and allowed for him to come and talk to her if he chose. Anderson made note that her primary goal with the patient was to help him find ways to control his behavior. He obviously had serious difficulties, starving himself, self-mutilation, ill-conceived escapes. Private Christopher certainly did himself a lot of harm. On Monday morning, April 13, Lieutenant Anderson ran the group therapy session on the ward. Joseph Christopher did something out of character at the meeting. He became agitated while Anderson was speaking to another patient in the group, and he interrupted. "How can you tell him he has problems?" Christopher asked angrily. Since it was rare for Christopher to participate at all, Lieutenant Anderson turned her attention to him. "Should we be discussing something else?" she asked. "I want to discuss where I'd rather be right now," Christopher said. "Where is that?" Anderson asked. "In New York, in the Adirondack Mountains." By this time, Lieutenant Anderson had read the nursing notes that Nurse Burgess had written about things Christopher had said on Friday evening. Something about killing people in New York. It dawned on her that the patient might have said such things as a ploy to get back home. He had once asked what it would take for him to be transferred from Fort Benning to a veterans' hospital in Buffalo. "How bad do you want to be back in New York?" Anderson asked him. "To what lengths would you go to get back to New York?" "What do you mean?" he asked. "Would you lie or say someone in your family was ill or anything like that?" "I'm not going to answer that question," Christopher said. He seemed angry with her. About an hour after group therapy ended, Lieutenant Anderson was at the nurses' station preparing medication when Joseph Christopher approached her. Patients were not allowed in the nurses' station. She asked him if there was something he wanted to talk about. "No, I don't have anything I want to talk about. I have something to tell you." He asked if she knew anything about him committing a crime. "Did you commit a crime?" Lieutenant Anderson asked. "Yes, I killed some people." "How many people did you kill?" He paused and thought about it, then said, "I'm not sure about the number." "Were they all male, all female, or were they mixed?" Anderson asked. "They were all male," Christopher answered. "When did this happen?" "In December, around Christmas." "What was the time span?" Anderson asked. "I don't know what you mean." "Did they all take place in December or was it from December to January?" Christopher thought about it for a bit. "From September to January." "Then the last person you killed was in January?" she asked. "Yes." "Were the people all black, all white, Puerto Rican, or mixed?" "I don't know," he said. "What do you mean you don't know?" Christopher thought again. "None of them were white." "Then they were all ethnic?" she asked. "Yes." "Why did you do it?" "There were reasons," Christopher answered. "I don't understand," said Lieutenant Anderson. "What reasons?" "I knew this was something I had to do," he told her. "There were signs that told me I had to do this." "Did somebody tell you to do it?" she asked. "Did you hear voices or something that told you to do it?" "No," he answered. "There were just signs. I knew it was something I had to do." "Why are you telling me this?" Anderson asked. "You told me outright that you don't trust me. Why are you telling me?" He looked at her and said blankly, "I wanted you to know." He turned to leave. "That's all I have to say," he told her. He walked out to the dining room. He walked out to the dining area behind the nurses' station and sat down in a chair. After a moment or so, Lieutenant Anderson followed him. She had to keep an eye on him anyway, as he was under one-on-one watch. "Why are you staring at me like that?" he asked. "Am I staring at you?" "I just want to know why you're looking at me like that." "I didn't know I was looking at you in any particular way," she answered. Joseph Christopher fell silent. Nurse slash Lieutenant Anderson remained with him for the rest of her shift, but he said nothing else. Anderson reported the conversation to Captain Allen, who spoke with his superior officer about what Private Christopher had said to the two nurses. They notified the deputy provost marshal, who in turn contacted the Army's Criminal Investigation Division, known as the CID. Sergeant Thomas Carr of the CID reviewed the Army's records on Private Joseph Gerard Christopher. For a man who had only been in the service for five months, Christopher had quite the dossier. Joseph G. Christopher was twenty-five years old. He had enlisted in the Army on September sixteenth, nineteen eighty, in Buffalo, New York, which was listed as his place of birth and civilian home. According to his enlistment papers, he stood five feet eight inches tall, weighed one hundred seventy pounds, had brown hair and hazel eyes. He had scored high on the military entrance exams, but had chosen infantry. He had passed his medical exam on September nineteenth and had reported to Fort Jackson, South Carolina, for processing on November thirteenth. He had arrived in Fort Benning, Georgia, on November nineteenth for basic training, assigned to Company A, Fourth Battalion, First Infantry Training Brigade. On January eighteenth, nineteen eighty-one, approximately two weeks before he would have completed basic training, Christopher had allegedly attacked Private Leonard Coles, a fellow soldier in his platoon, and inflicted two knife wounds in the victim's chest. Private Coles had been treated at Martin Army Hospital, recovered, and had since been released. There were several witnesses to the attack. Motive unknown. Private Christopher had refused to make any statements. January twenty-first, nineteen eighty-one. "Well, good morning, Mom. I cannot say things are fine because I am in jail. I am charged with aggravated assault. Do not go telling anyone, not any of my sister at all. It is a pretty serious charge, so I might end up doing some time, or get tossed out of the Army. I do not know, I only talked to a counselor, not a lawyer. They are sending to defend me. I will have to send those packages back to you, cannot have anything. Mom, about the trees in the country, call that guy back and try to get out of the contract, or the property will be worthless. What that place need is me to take out firewood and clear out all the apple trees. If they cut the trees, you might as well sell the place. Also, the money he gave you is nowhere close to what wood is worth these day. Please try. Write soon. P.S. They finally got the hostage. Love, Joseph Christopher." January eighteenth was a Sunday. At ten thirty a.m., men in the Second Platoon were milling around building forty-eight seventy-seven, a two-story wood-framed barracks. It was near the end of quiet time, when recruits are allowed to socialize, write letters, or relax as they like. Private Leonard Coles, age twenty, had spent the late morning talking with friends in the barracks. Around ten forty a.m., the platoon was instructed to fall out for formation. Recruits headed to their wall lockers. Coles stood facing his open locker when he felt someone grab him from behind. "When he actually grabbed me, I thought it was somebody playing," Leonard Coles later recalled. "But when I felt something hit me in the chest, and I saw the blade go up, then I knew it wasn't playing." Men in the barracks heard Coles shout, "What's going on?" Private Coles instinctively pushed back against his attacker and spun him around, shoving the man against the lockers. The attacker pushed forward, and Coles reached up and grabbed the man's upraised wrists. The knife quivered in the attacker's right hand as the two men locked in a vibrating grip, the attacker pushing forward, and Coles pushing back. Private Anthony Bulger heard the commotion from across the bay. He looked and saw two men standing facing each other, wrestling. The two grappling men knocked into a bunk and fell to the floor. Private Bulger ran over to break up the fight. Several men had heard the noise and came to see what was going on. Private Coles was sitting on top of another man who struggled beneath him. "I didn't know who it was until we hit the floor," Leonard Coles said later. "That's when I got hit in the side. I knew he had stabbed me. He tried to keep the knife in me, but I grabbed his hand and pushed it away. He tried to stab me again, and I grabbed his wrist that the knife was in. That's when I looked up and saw that it was Private Christopher." Coles held one hand against Christopher's face and pinned Christopher's right elbow to the floor with the other. "I was shouting and Christopher was screaming," Coles recalled. "I know I used profanity, but I don't know what I said." As Private Bulger intervened, he saw the weapon in Christopher's hand. "Help me!" Bulger shouted. "This guy has a knife." Another soldier ran to Bulger's aid, and they scrambled on Christopher as he thrashed and fought. Private Charles Getz had been standing in the middle of the bay when he heard the yelling and saw men running toward the lockers. Getz went over and spotted Coles on top of Christopher. He grabbed Coles by the belt and pulled him off. That's when he saw the blood on Private Coles's fatigue shirt. Private Claude Coleman got there in time to see Leonard Coles standing, clutching his side, and he heard Coles say, "I've been stabbed." Coles ran off, and Private Getz followed after him. Bulger and another soldier were on the floor trying to restrain Private Christopher, who was screaming incoherently, crying, jerking his head from side to side, as if he was out of his mind, as one witness stated. Claude Coleman saw Christopher's body shake, as if he was having a convulsion. The two soldiers were trying to get the knife out of Christopher's hand, but he had it gripped as if for dear life. A third man jumped in and grabbed Christopher's flailing left arm. They struggled and shouted at him, but as all three would tell the CID later that day, Private Christopher did not seem to be aware of what was happening or where he was, and he didn't appear to recognize anybody around him, even though they were all men in his platoon. They managed to pry the knife from his hand, and one of them shouted for someone to fetch the drill sergeant. Christopher eventually stopped struggling under the weight of his three barracks mates. He sobbed and wailed and whimpered, and though he was surrounded by men he knew in a place he'd been living for weeks, his eyes darted wildly in petrified shock, like a man who suddenly awakes to find himself cast into a lake of fire. The one detail that left the deepest lingering impression on some of those who witnessed the incident up close was the look of Joseph Christopher. As Claude Coleman described, "It was a really disturbing thing to see, the way he cried and was so scared and out of it, like watching somebody's mind break apart right before your eyes. The memory stays with you, even if you wish it wouldn't." Three decades afterward, one of the men who had held Christopher to the floor that morning said, "The main thing I remember is the crazy look in his eyes. It was a wild, scared, crazed look that I'd never seen before. I literally had nightmares about it for years after. I've only seen that look one other time in my life, when I saw a deer that had been hit by a car. It was a young deer, and both its front legs were broken, and it had that exact same look in its eyes, that maniacal look of terror and confusion." "Dear Carlo, I am not doing very well. I got myself in a lot of trouble. They have me in the stockade, charged with aggravated assault, with intent to commit murder. I need a good lawyer. I am not very good at asking for favors. Please help me. I go to court martial in thirty to forty days. From January nineteenth, nineteen eighty-one. Also, my mail has not been coming. Please have some get in contact with me. Sincerely, your friend, Joseph Christopher." Sworn Statement of Private J. Cloud. Christopher walked up to Coles from behind while Coles was standing at his wall locker. Christopher put his left leg between Coles's legs, grabbed Coles from behind by putting his left arm around Coles's chest, and started hitting Coles in the chest with his right hand. I couldn't see them from the front, and that's why I don't know if Christopher had the knife in his hand at that time, but I think he did. Question. "Why did Christopher attack Coles?" Answer. "I don't know. Coles never said anything to him, and I was with Coles all morning, except for this morning about oh seven hundred hours. That was the first time I saw Christopher and probably the first time Coles saw him too." Question. "Did anything happen at oh seven hundred, or any other time, that would have made Christopher angry with Coles?" Answer. "Not to my knowledge. At oh seven hundred hours, me and Christopher were just getting off duty from the reactionary force. Coles was at the barracks at that time." Question. "How far away were you standing from Coles and Christopher when they were fighting?" Answer. "About four feet. My wall locker is behind Coles." Question. "Where had Christopher been prior to the incident?" Answer. "At the other end of the barracks where his bunk is located." Question. "Had Christopher and Coles been in arguments prior to this incident?" Answer. "Not to my knowledge." Question. "Do you know where Christopher got the knife?" Answer. "Probably while serving at the mess hall. I think he was working as a server there last Wednesday, fourteen January, eighty-one." Question. "Is there anything you would like to add to your statement?" Answer. "Yes. Christopher might have mistaken Coles for me. Last night, twenty-one hundred hours, seventeen January, eighty-one. I saw that Christopher had wet his bed, and I kidded him about it. He didn't say anything to me at the time. That was while we were on the reactionary force. No one else knew about the incident. I think the knife was in his wall locker, and he did not get a chance to get to it until he saw me with Coles in the barracks. Christopher usually stays by himself and doesn't talk to people much." The knife had a white handle and was eleven inches in overall length, with a six-inch silver blade. It was a non-folding kitchen-type knife. The mess hall shift leader confirms that it looked identical to a knife he had first noticed to be missing the night before. Statements from all the witnesses were consistent in that Christopher had not said anything to Coles either prior to or during the attack. No one was aware of any tension or previous interaction between the two men, least of all the victim himself. Private Leonard Coles had been admitted to the base hospital in stable condition and underwent surgery for two stab wounds, one in his right upper chest area, and another on the left lower lateral chest. There were no serious internal injuries, and only a minor injury to the spleen. Coles was interviewed by the CID and said he didn't know why Christopher had attacked him. Private Juan Feliciano usually walked to and from church on Sundays with Private Christopher. On the morning of January eighteenth, Feliciano and Christopher had walked to church at about seven forty-five, at which time Feliciano observed that Christopher was extremely nervous and shaky. Normally, Christopher didn't say much, but on this morning, the two of them had a conversation. "We were talking about military life and other subjects. We also talked about people messing up in the platoon," Feliciano told the CID. Private Christopher had remarked that he was tired of everyone messing with him, and that if anyone fucked with him, they would not be fucking around anymore. Christopher had not mentioned any names. "We went to church, and after church was out. I didn't see Christopher anymore. When I was walking back to the barracks, I heard that there had been a stabbing. I later found out that Christopher had stabbed Coles." According to Private Feliciano and others in the platoon, Private Christopher was very religious. Christopher was a Catholic and attended Mass every Sunday. He also carried a Bible and red prayer book everywhere he went, including the mess hall and the latrine. Dear Mother, Today is Sunday, January thirty-first, nineteen eighty-one. Went to chapel service this morning. The chaplain gave a good sermon. It kind of hit home, and I pray that God grants me the grace to be a good and wise Christian from this day on. About my situation, I am here because I stabbed someone pretty bad. They harassed me until I snapped, I guess, because I kept to myself and read my Bible and prayed. I just could not get away from it, and when they noticed, they tried to get closer to me, trying to make out like a wimp and a faggot. They kept harassing me. It was craze. Mom, it is not normal to need time to be able to relax. Please talk to Mr. Carlo Bianchi. Tell him that if he does not know a good lawyer, that I asked you to talk to Mr. Becker. I should have wrote him first, but I was kind of upset. Ever since Dad passed, I have gone to him for counseling like my father. Mom, would you please show him this letter to explain my situation? About the Reader's Digest, I would like them very much. I have two but cannot do the skill builders because they are not mine. I would like very much to have good reading and writing skills. I think if I go to jail, I go into classes for reading and writing. This army is good for building your body, but I do not want to be Superman. I just want to live a simple life. I just got the letter I think you wrote first after I told you that I was in here, stockade. The one you said was mushy. I started to cry. I love you so much it hurts. Eternal love, Joseph." The CID wanted to determine a reason for the assault. They spoke with Joseph Christopher's commanding officers, who described him as a quiet recruit, unremarkable, neither particularly good nor particularly bad, kept to himself, did not cause problems. The men in Christopher's platoon all said the same thing. He was very quiet, kept to himself, read his Bible all the time. He meditated a lot. He did not socialize or build friendships with anyone, nor did he get into arguments or fights. The same word was used over and over again in describing Joseph Christopher. Loner. Officially, prior to the assault on Coles, there were no issues with Private Christopher. The only thing that struck the CID as a little off was the degree to which Christopher had apparently avoided camaraderie. That was a little unusual, particularly in an infantry training brigade, where soldiers typically build friendships and are encouraged to do so. In combat, these are the people you will rely on and who will in turn rely on you. No one in Christopher's platoon even knew where he was from. The stabbing of Private Coles had, of course, become the hot topic of conversation in the barracks and had piqued interest in the quiet recruit. A few details on Private Christopher began to emerge. Private Claude Coleman, one of the witnesses to the Coles assault, learns that Christopher was from Buffalo. Coleman had perhaps had more interaction with Joseph Christopher than anyone else, which wasn't saying much, insofar as really knowing anything about him. Claude Coleman had discovered early on how difficult it was to forge any kind of a friendship with Private Christopher. Coleman had first encountered Joe Christopher back in November, the day they were inducted into the Army. "I noticed him because of his hair," Coleman would recall. "It was very short, like he already had a military cut. He was also wearing sandals. That caught my attention too." At Fort Benning, Coleman and other recruits had tried talking to Christopher. He seemed aloof. Later on, I didn't think he was aloof. I thought he was just being very careful. But why or careful of what? We didn't know. Throughout basic training, Coleman had only one conversation with Christopher, and it occurred soon after their arrival at Fort Benning. "We were in the woods on a field exercise. Joe and I were sharing a shelter half, pup tent. As we were going to sleep, Joe asked me where I was from. I told him I was from a little town in upstate New York that he'd probably never heard of, a town outside Buffalo called Chictawaga. That sparked his interest, and he started asking me all kinds of questions, what I did before the Army and all that. Then I asked him, 'Hey, where are you from, man?' He said, 'Upstate New York,' and I asked him whereabouts. He said to me, 'Just shut up and go to sleep, man.'" I'll never forget the way he said it, like kind of matter of fact. "Just told me to shut up and go to sleep." And that's the last thing Joe ever said to me. The next contact of note that Coleman had with Christopher was during pugilistic training. a combat exercise in which two recruits use long padded weapons to simulate fighting hand-to-hand with a rifle. Joe got carried away, Coleman remembered. He just kept coming at me, like he wanted to beat me to death. The drill sergeant stopped it, and he said to Joe, what's wrong with you? Months afterward, Claude Coleman would be asked if he thought Joseph Christopher's behavior toward him had anything to do with race. Claude was half-black, half-white. I didn't think so. It's not like Joe was any friendlier with the white guys. That would be the consistent refrain from everyone in the platoon. No one had ever heard Christopher make any racial remarks or display animosity toward blacks. Private Christopher just seemed to want to avoid everybody. Right from the start, it also seems like he didn't want to be in Army, which made everyone wonder why he had joined in the first place, and what kind of a guy he really was. February fourth, nineteen eighty-one. Dear Mom, I have not heard anything about a court date, except that I am going to get a general court martial, whatever that means. Please tell me if you talk to anyone about a lawyer. I'd rather be in prison than in this stockade. I pass my day in pray. I am relying on God's grace to help throw this ordeal. I don't know what will be, I only pray. I put cotton in my ears. It helps a little, but I am always keyed. Your letter are presents from heaven. I honestly love you. Joseph. Major Donald Morgan of the Fort Benning JAG office had been assigned as Private Christopher's attorney. Major Morgan was having a lot of difficulty working with his client. Private Christopher would not communicate with him. Christopher was suspicious and guarded, and he wouldn't discuss his case, no matter how Major Morgan tried to assure him of the attorney-client relationship and establish a rapport. The only person at Fort Benning who Christopher would speak to was Father Michael Freeman, the Catholic chaplain, who visited him in the stockade at Private Christopher's request. Christopher's legal problems had only compounded since he'd been sent to the stockade, as evidenced in summary reports of his first three and a half weeks in custody. Twenty-nine January eighty-one. Involved in altercation with and attempted to assault another prisoner in mess hall. Five February eighty-one. Involved in second altercation with, same prisoner, and assaulted him in mess hall. During process of being placed in administrative segregation, assaulted guard, minimum necessary force used to subdue. Christopher sustained injury to nose. Transported to MAC, Martin Army Community Hospital. Refused treatment. Returned to Admin Seg. Eleven February eighty-one. Attempted to escape from custody while at MAC, Mental Hygiene Clinic. Bolted from doctor's office and attempted to stab guard and eye with pen. Christopher was also steadfastly refusing to eat, for reasons he would not explain. Dear Mom. Today is Friday, thirteen February nineteen eighty-one. I decided that I am going to eat whatever they put on my tray. Mom, I know that you would like to come down here, but I do not want you to spend the plane fare and pay for accommodation. I'm kind of depressed, and my letter probably reflects that. Mom, I seem to me that I am a fool. Each time I turn to talk to someone, I feel depressed. Later think I said the wrong thing, and will get myself in more trouble, and you would not believe the stupid things I do. I pray that God someday makes me a fool no more. I love you all. Joseph. Dear Mom. Today again being Friday, February thirteenth. I am not going to stick to my decision to eat everything they put on my tray, take lunch and feel bloated. And I get bad feedbacks most of this, probably does not make sense. But this place is turning, so I do not know what is the thing to do when I used to talk to Mr. Bianchi. He told me he used to eat an apple in the morning and meat at night. I can do fifty-five push-ups now and seventy-five sit-ups. Mom, I am sorry I must be a weak person. This place in hard on my head, I pray and pray. Take the money I have and come see me. Visiting day is Sunday. Do not spend your monies. I know that holding you will give me the strength I need. Do not worry. I am not thinking of hurting myself or anything, but I am very lonely. I sorry to cause these hardship. Mom, really I am. I have to hold fast to my dreams, or I will never be able to say I lived, and I know I live, because I feel intense love. Always. Joseph. Digging deeper, the CID learned that the attack on Private Coles was not the first time Christopher had caused a buzz in the platoon. He had done other things that raised eyebrows, and eventually fists. More than once, he shaved his head with a razor. When asked why, he said he couldn't afford the haircuts. Other times, he said he didn't want anyone else cutting his hair. He would sometimes get up and walk around the barracks after lights out. One night when he was on fire guard duty, when he was actually supposed to be patrolling around the barracks, a fellow soldier had awakened to find Christopher standing by the bunk, staring at him. The nocturnal wandering apparently became so frequent at one point that some of the men had a hard time getting a good night's sleep, dozing and waking because they were uneasy around him. One incident stood out from the rest and marked a moment when feelings about Private Christopher surged from wariness to hostility. I know I'm not seeing what I'm seeing, the drill sergeant thundered. The platoon stood in formation, silent and at attention. The drill sergeant was wild with fury, disbelief. Are you fucking kidding me? He glared, eyes ablaze, veins bulging as if to pop, screaming to shake the earth. Are you fucking kidding me? It wasn't bluster. The drill sergeant really couldn't fucking believe what he was seeing. Neither could anyone else. January. Weeks now into basic training, and there, in formation, out between the barracks for the whole goddamned base to see, stood a private wearing shower shoes, dressed in uniform but with shower shoes, flip flops, on his feet instead of boots. To make it worse, the stupid bastard was standing in the front row, not in the back where he might have had at least a slim chance of getting away with it, but in the goddamned first row, where nobody passing by, including officers and other platoons could miss it. Private Christopher, the drill sergeant charged forth, growling, snapping, baring his teeth like a pit bull about to maul a chihuahua. Are you a wise guy? Are you the stupidest motherfucker on the face of the fucking earth? Come to my formation in shower shoes? Where are your fucking boats? Joseph Christopher stood wide-eyed, clueless, like a student who suddenly realizes too late that he's handed in the wrong assignment and the teacher is angry. He said something about having to wash his feet, or his boots were wet, or something like that, Leonard Coles recalled. In those days, it was mass punishment. If one guy screwed up, the whole platoon got punished. They took Christopher inside to the drill sergeant's office. The rest of us got a ten-to-fifteen-minute punishment session, doing push-ups, sit-ups. When they released him back to the barracks, guys were saying to him, what the hell were you thinking, man? Oh, you're special, huh? He got a lot of flack for a couple days. The drill sergeant was embarrassed. The whole platoon was embarrassed. It was a big thing. Right then and there, I knew something wasn't right with him, Coles remembered. We already knew this guy was weird, but that weird? That was an unforgettable day. If Private Christopher didn't grasp exactly how upset his fellow recruits were with him that day, he found out at night after lights out. A blanket party is a group attack, an unofficial form of corporal punishment inflicted on a recruit who is deemed a fuck-up or undesirable by his fellow soldiers. The victim is restrained by having a blanket held tightly over his body and face to keep him from fighting back and from identifying his assailants, while others beat him with blunt objects, such as bars of soap encased in socks. Blanket parties usually happen in the barracks after dark, when the victim is asleep in his bunk, as was the case here. According to men who were in the barracks when it happened, there were about twelve guys who participated in the beating. I saw them do it to him after dark, Claude Coleman remembered. I didn't see them planning it, but I saw them do it. I'm sorry to say they did. There was no way anybody could help him. He just had to lay there and take the pain. It bothered Coleman, who felt the blanket party was unjustifiably cruel. I mean, this guy was mentally ill. He had serious problems that wouldn't have been obvious to anyone on the street, but it was clear by now that something was wrong, much deeper in his psyche. He needed to be taken out of the military, out of society as it turned out, but to torture the guy like that? He didn't deserve that. Another barracks mate spoke of the blanket party and the treatment of Private Christopher in general. Guys picked on him before then, knocking his hat off, smacking him in the back of the head. We'd go to mess hall and no one would sit with him. I avoided him myself. I always got a weird feeling from him, so I kept my distance, and so did the people I hung out with. There were guys who tormented him, though. He was a fuck-up, a weirdo, and there's little or no sympathy for fuck-ups. It's just like high school. Most of the guys were just over high school age, late teens, early twenties. Not much compassion for the oddball.
Context of white supremacy. Alrighty, that is our first audio session. Uh, we will pick up another letter. That'll be one for folks who, uh, want to participate. Why do we have so many of these letters in the book? Why do we thank Palanero, white female author? Why did she give us so many of these letters from Joey to his white mother? Anyway, but we'll pick up a new letter, January eleventh, nineteen eighty-one. That's four days before they had the neo-Nazi Klan rally in downtown Buffalo on Dr. King's birthday, which was not a national holiday at that time. Anyway, uh, the number to dial if you have commentary, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, decode five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star six-one if you would like to participate. Number again, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, decode five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star six-one if you would like to participate. Email untiljustice@gmail.com. We can share your commentary live on the air. Uh, my, I'm really not into social media like at all. I have said that for a long, 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 long time, many, many years. Uh, I despise social media and, uh, just you never know if you're, you know, about to get into some sort of spat with a twelve-year-old or, you know, whatever. Uh, at any rate, I have attempted to use my social media in a constructive manner, uh, by posting many, many articles, uh, particularly within the chronology of where we're reading in the story. Uh, I've tried to share them online so you can check out some of the information, get more details about this case. I guess folks can share that as well, because I've done all that, you know, hooting and saying, hey, this is mandatory, and you gotta read this book if you're not gonna follow along or be listening along in the book club. This is important, since so many of us are not aware, certainly don't know any details uh, about this. I think this will give us a better understanding of what happened last month in Buffalo, as well as the entire history of why they don't have any grocery stores and all of that, uh, by having a better understanding of this case, uh, in addition to, you know, all these black males to be killed and no one cares. Uh, but folks can share. Has this been worthwhile? We're about halfway through the book now, so has it been worthwhile, or is this, you know, something people are just slogging through, like the man in the high castle? Uh, you should be able to, to have an opinion about whether or not this is worthwhile. Uh, but one of the reports, at least for me, it has been super informative. I've never even been to Buffalo, never even thought about going to Buffalo until all of this happened, so it's been very informative for me. One of the reports, uh, that's right in line with where we are, uh, with Mr. Christopher's indicted, or looming indictment, so we're kind of at the beginning of nineteen eighty-one. So this is in the New York Times, Saturday, May sixteen, nineteen eighty-one. Even, we heard some of this even expressed this week. For Buffalo's suspects' friends, shock and puzzlement. Now, I posted the report, uh, online, and it is lengthy. This is right at the time when he was indicted, or a few days afterwards. Uh, Joe worked with blacks. Knew them, and he didn't have any prejudice against them, said a white friend who was in the home improvement business with Mr. Christopher in the mid nineteen seventies, and saw him as recently as last December nineteen eighty, when the private was home on furlough killing black people. He doesn't just, he just doesn't, didn't talk about blacks, the friend added. He might have made a passing remark, but nothing more than I or many other people would have made. Now, that is interesting. Ernest Smith, who is black, recalled that he worked as a maintenance man with Mr. Christopher and socialized with him in nineteen seventy-eight and nineteen seventy-nine. Joe once said that he had been ripped off by some blacks when he was a boy, Mr. Smith said, but that's about all he ever said about blacks. He didn't seem to have any strong feelings about race. You can read the entire article, but that is so, I'm sure they got some reports like that about Peyton Tendron too, even with some of his black friends, uh, black friends to boot, or coworkers. Anywho, uh, let's see. Number again, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, decode five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star six-one if you would like to participate. Uh, folks who dialed in with a hand up, uh, lounge should be open. Proceed.
Can I have your hand?
Yes, sir.
Um, greetings, Gus, greetings, caller, and the listeners. Um, Christopher, Joseph, he, there's so many correlations to, um, Gentrin, so many. Um, I have a, a quote from, um, Peyton, S. Gentrin. I'm gonna read really quick, and it's, um, it's funny how things just magically work together. It seems all my life has been building up to this attack. Everyone I met, everything I did, every place I went, it all had some kind of influence. It doesn't seem specifically possible, but here it stands, for example. Playing Apocalypse Rising on Roblox gave me interest and survival and guns, which led me to hunting and shooting, which gave me colonitis and deeper interest in firearms. Every single thing that happened influenced this attack. It was like this was, it was like this was what I was meant to do in life. And this is what he posted on, um, the internet. And Joseph said that he was, um, like, his purpose, he said, uh, he told someone that it was his purpose to do this, to, to go out and hunt black people. So, um, I'm just, the Yorugus, white supremacists, they're, they're cold, or whatever it means to be white, it's, it's, there's something there, um, and I'm gonna pop my light.
Much obliged, sir. Uh, let's see. Other folks who dialed in, if you have commentary on the text, proceed.
May I have your hand?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Good evening to, uh, Gus, the host, and to all the participants of the, uh, program. Uh, I wanted to make a comment, a few comments, actually. Um, it seems like in the text that, uh, Mr. Christopher is treated as kind of a dullard, like he is... Like, he is, uh, delusional, he's, you know, not quite able to process, uh, information or things that he's done, the actions that he's made. Um, and I thought that, uh, paired pretty interestingly with the comparison to the deer in the text, that, uh, the, one of the victims or the person who witnessed the attack against the victim, uh, reported comparing him to a deer that he had seen injured, with both of his, uh, front legs had been broken. And it made, uh, Joseph Christopher seem like he was a victim or, um, he was basically useless in, uh, these attacks. He was not comprehending and he was, um, pretty much just, uh, uh, just a component of that, uh, action. He wasn't really the person who participated or, um, actually attacked someone. Um, the other thing was that the, one of the things I wanted to comment, having, um, been in the military, um, that environment of basic training can be very magnified in terms of, uh, or can magnify a person's social awkwardness, because that's just a very, uh, environment where there is not much other activity going on other than your training. So, if you have, um, uh, intellectual deficiencies, it will, it will stand out very easily, uh, in that situation. And I have seen, witnessed other people being, I guess, uh, singled out for their social, uh, awkwardness or their intellectual inability in that situation and basic training. Um, and one com- the last comment I wanted to make was that, uh, it seemed as if, uh, Joseph Christopher might have had, um, a form of, uh, mental retardation, but even in that state, his level of understanding of how to exact racism like supremacy is genius in comparison to, uh, victims of racism, and that's all I wanted to share.
Much obliged, good sir. Uh, let's see. Other folks who dialed in with a hand up, uh, if you have commentary to share on the first portion of the reading. Line should be open, proceed.
Good evening, can I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good evening everyone. Um, so you asked a question about why the author keeps putting the letters in the, uh, the books? And I think it's to, um, I guess, show compassion to this killer. Um, so far, um, what do I wanna say now? All those black males that he killed, in all those cases, there's some kind of, I guess, a criminal background brought up getting into, uh, what's it called, running numbers or something, womanizer, something, having guns, like, something. And then this guy, who was killing people, stabbing people, and they can't bring up anything in his history, nothing criminal or anything like that, it's just about, like, him loving his mom, um, like, I don't know what I'm doing, like, so far, that's what I'm seeing. That's why I think, um, she's, um, bringing in these letters is to show, um, compassion to this killer. Um, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Everyone loves a mama's boy, right? Can't be a, can't be that much of a monster if he's writing his mom all the time. Uh, let's see. Other folks, much obliged, ma'am. Other folks who dialed in with a hand up.
Greetings, everyone. Uh, yes, uh, like the last caller stated, I'm, I'm just gonna use another word, uh, to it. Uh, the writer is trying to establish some level of humanity, quote unquote, uh, with this, this, uh, racist white supremacist. That's, that's basically, in my opinion, all it is. Uh, the, the last part, the last part of the reading, uh, as far as what, uh, started taking place with him, and, uh, it sounds like one of the, one of the listeners, uh, did time in the military, I didn't, but, uh, I did see the movie Full Metal Jacket, and, and the, the person in, in the movie, uh, had a level of insanity. Uh, and, and, uh, if one watched the movie, you know what happened in the end. Uh, but, uh, it, it's, uh, very similar, uh, to the movie on, on what took place. All of those are, are real huge signs, and then when he, he comes out and state that he killed people, I, I would put it this way, if that was a black person, they definitely would have connected him immediately, uh, with, with the, uh, the situations, based on what he was, what, uh, uh, behavior that he had in, in the, uh, the boot camp, I guess that's what it was, uh, period of time, that got him very quickly in confinement, in greater confinement. Uh, it definitely would have been some kind of connections, you know, involved, in my, in my opinion. Uh, let me see, what else, uh, can I mention? Uh, that's all I can think about right now. Thank you.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. Uh, let me see, I'll get our emails, get my notes, and then check in, make sure everybody's satisfied before we get to the second audio. Let's see, one of the folks who wrote in, untiljustice@gmail.com, the email. Uh, one of our investors wrote in, uh, a lot of constructive in, uh, information from Monday's broadcast with Dr. Frankie Dobson Jr. Man, I was so nervous, so rare to have a victim of racism on the program and not gunshots and Homeland Security. Uh, I was not clear on Dr. Dobson's answer to your question of who is more confused. Christopher reminds me of the character Travis Vickle in the nineteen seventy-six movie Taxi Driver. Vickle is a Vietnam vet taxi driver who becomes a vigilante to clean up the streets of New York City. How many vigilante movies did they have where a white man gets a gun to go kill people? Man, at this time period, too. Like Christopher, Vickle shaves his head into a mohawk, has a gaunt look, and wears a green army field jacket. The screenwriter wrote the script such that Vickle kills only black males, but Scorsese, the director, decided against this because it would make the character "look too racist", end quotes. However, the movie is still rife with plenty of black misandry. Hmm, dang. I think Taxi Driver's on Mr. Fuller's list of films, but anyhow. Chapter eleven, number one. How the hell had he gotten into the Army? He hadn't even made it out of basic training, training. He got in because he is white, of course. Number two, he used a razor blade to make a ten-centimeter cut around the base of his penis. Genital self-mutilation is associated with schizophrenia and has a higher incidence in transgender and homosexual individuals. From Psychiatric Aspects of Male Genital Self-Mutilation, T. Martin et al., Journal of Psychopathology, nineteen ninety-one. Hmm. Number three, he had scored high on military entrance exams but had chosen infantry. Makes you wonder about these tests and, and what exactly do they measure? I was thinking, did they lie? Did they, like, adjust his test scores, quote unquote? Like, there's so much of that, right? Varsity Blues and all the rest of it. Uh, did they just lie? And, oh, yes, you know, you got a ninety percentile, wink, wink. Uh, let's see. Number four, commit murder, court martial, male has not been coming. The poor spelling, oh, this is all from his letters, and so for the people who just have the audio, like, hmm. It was greatly embellished, uh, and this has come up before. If, if people recall, we read Dr. Leila Africa's Nutricide, and that book has a lot of errors and it's just poorly edited. And I narrated that text, and I said, I'm not going to, you know, try to decipher and decode what they meant and all that. I'm gonna read exactly what is on the page. You couldn't even do that for some of this because the spelling is so poor. Uh, for example, murder is M-U-R-D-U-R-E. Murder is what it would have, that's what I mean, like, that's what it would have sounded like now. Presumably, they wanted listeners to understand, but in my view, them doing that, you miss out. Like, this guy is totally illiterate and, oh, I think this, we just talked about this, uh, with Professor J. Russell Hawkins. Uh, the Bible told them so, Religion of White Supremacy, where there are lots of letters where white parents wrote into J. Strom Thurmond, and it was the exact same thing. Uh, just all these goofy spellings for the basic grateful, basic words. Um, yeah, same thing, but if you, if you don't have the text to see, like, what, it's not even punctuation. Like, where does the sentence end, man? Come on. Basic third-grade grammar skills are totally absent. Like, they say this guy's a high school dropout, like, did you drop out of middle school? Did you get out of the fifth grade? Let's see. Number five, Private Christopher was very religious. Christopher was a Catholic and attended Mass every Sunday. He also carried a Bible and read a prayer book. More of the religion of white supremacy. He probably saw himself as an avenging angel on a holy mission, indeed. Number six, that would be the consistent refrain from everyone in the platoon. No one had ever heard Christopher make any racial remarks or display animosity toward blacks. Confusion about racism, white supremacy can be lethal. Peyton Gendron was friendly, too, absolutely. Grady Lewis and them hung out for two hours just before, like, hours, literally, before the shooting. Number seven, a blanket party is a group attack. Guys picked on him before then, knocking his hat off, smacking him in the back of the head. Blanket parties, throw a blanket over the victim then beat them, are also done in prison environments. I think it may have been mentioned in the book club. Selection Last Man Standing, Tragedy and Triumph of Geronimo G. Jagga Pratt. O.J. Simpson, Johnny Cochran, Johnny Cochran. Uh, let's see. Oh, we didn't get that far, I have to pause there and come back. Okay, get to some of my notes from this portion of the reading. Let's see. We, oh, we gotta go all the way back to the very beginning, the quote that we started this section off with. All the way back, let's see, is that, there we go. Alright, so part three, The Quiet Man. I'm afraid I can't explain myself, sir, because I am not myself, you see? Lewis Carroll, Alice in Wonderland. I think that's really important, as I said, the title of this book, Absolute Madness. And so this is, again, this person is crazy. This person, you know, is having their mental problems, uh, you know, I don't even know who I am, you know? And using a child's fairy tale to describe a white killer. Not problematic, in my view, I would say act of white supremacy racism. I don't know if we were talking about O.J. Simpson. I suspect we would not be using, you know, whatever, uh, equivalent Harry Potter to describe Orenthal James, uh, in the beginning of the murder trial nineteen ninety-four. I seriously doubt it. Uh, let's see, next. So, he's in greater confinement in Georgia while the Atlanta child murders are going on, and they end up placing him in administrative segregation and the segregation cell. I just find the use of that sort of language, again, in Georgia in the nineteen eighties, like, that is fascinating. Like, how long is, is it still called administrative segregation? Is that still the official, like, military title for it? If you get, have to be disciplined or what have you? The segregation cell, is that where they put you? Man, let's see, make it plain, they said he would compulsively masturbate. What in the world? Now, that's what, this book wasn't published until two thousand seventeen, but man, Dr. Francis Cresswellzing, help me understand, like, what is going on? And then the hypocrisy of it all, to say, oh, no, 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 he's so religious, he has his, his Bible with him all the time, and then he would chastise the others for talking about sex or partying or anything that offended his deeply religious sensibilities, whatever that means. See. Alrighty, sorry, the wind was getting the best of me, ready to roll now. Okay. Uh, so, all of this hubbub, he's supposedly religious, and then combine, even, think, what does that mean? I'm almost, Woody Allen? Woody's not even his name, remember? We did read his autobiography, apropos of nothing, not that long, it hasn't even been a year ago. Compulsively masturbating, also in New York State. Uh, you never knew what to expect with him, which is why guards and prisoners alike had learned to be cautious around Private Joseph Christopher or avoid him altogether when possible. Now, that sounds like codification in the workplace. This guy is dangerous, he's weird, you don't know what he's gonna do. Is he masturbating today? Is he trying to stab you? You gotta keep an eye on this one and avoid him if you can. Studying the enemy. Let's see. Using the razor to slice the penis. I have to check out the report that was mentioned. Um, lots of, of phallic focus on the, uh, genital region, right? Like, uh, the self-mutilation of the penis and that, yeah, we'll even get, I have to point out more of that as we go, but wow. Uh, let's see. He's bragging about killing black people. Now, when we had Matt Greider on the program, journalist at the Buffalo News, he said if Christopher had not bragged about killing these black people in Fort Benning, he would not have been caught, at least no time soon, because they were not, he said, enforcement officers, he was not one of their suspects at all. If he had kept his mouth shut about all this in Georgia, he could have served whatever time, charges for stabbing, uh, Private Cole, and then, you know, went back to killing black people in New York. There would have been none the wiser. Let's see. So, he admits that he killed all of these folks. He's talking to Lieutenant Anderson, uh, and he says, were the people all black, all white, Puerto Rican, or mixed? I think also the staff at the, at the Army barracks, Lieutenant Anderson and some of these other folks who are guarding him, I think they did a great job. I think the one whose name's Christopher also, great job of just asking questions. Like, you don't wanna, someone says, you know, I killed all these black people, oh, my God, and run around, I can't believe it's, hmm, how many? Where'd you do this? How'd you do it? Ask as man, as calm, especially if you're in a safe environment, you know, he's in shackles and in his cell or what have you, like, oh, yeah. Ask question, write down, mm-hmm, 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 hmm, interesting, hmm. Were all the people black, all white, Puerto Rican, or mixed? I don't know. What do you mean, you don't know? She presses him on that one, like, come on now. She'd say, oh, man, you know, he's kinda slow, dim-witted, ignorant? No, Lieutenant Anderson, come on. Tell him, you're not that ignorant, and you know if you killed some white people or some negroes, now what did you do? Now, what did you do?" He says, "Well, none of them were white." Now, see, you can be doped up, ignorant, stupid, all kinds of things. "You kill any white people?" "No." "Alright then." She says, "Then they were all ethnic?" "Yes." Now, even that, what does that mean? Ethnic? Come on now, he's not that ignorant. In fact, here, he sounds like a sane race soldier. White people do the exact same thing. So, the racial classification, "Oh, I don't, you know, the sun got in my eyes and I was confused," you know, I don't, Rachel Dozel, they get all kinds of confused, whatever's gonna suit my purposes. I might not even know my own racial classification. Deceivers. Like, see, that's what I mean, these letters, this is egregious. Uh, pretty serious is S-E-I-O-U-S. Tossed out is T-O-U-S-S-E-D. And she said tossed, the narrator, I mean, now, you know, that's why I said, like, really? Put this incorrectly. So the people go, like, "Wow, this dude is, what? How did you, yes, how did you get into the Army?" All this, so, we get this really, what do you wanna call it, colorful anecdote about, uh, Private Cole's coming out in his, uh, sandals, right, for formation and so everyone goes berserk and, you know, then everybody in the troop gets, well, that's the way they do it, right? Uh, in the military, I haven't done all that, but, I mean, hey, one person messes up, the entire platoon is gonna be punished. I guess this is what leads to the so-called blanket party. Now, in my view, now, we're back to, I said, everything is getting back to the phallic level, something about all this is really homoerotic. All of these males slipping around at night, I'm just networking too, but slipping around at night and we're gonna throw a blanket and hop on top of you presumably so that you can't move around and then we come and, uh, bludgeon you. They said, take like a bar of soap and put it in socks, I mean, just like, uh, a scrotum sack almost, right? And then we just come and whale on you, like, "Yeah, I get it, it's super violent, but, I mean, homoeroticism can be violent. See lynching and castration." But, I mean, all of this is the, this is what we got Veterans Day for? This is why we gotta excoriate Colin Kaepernick? Blanket parties? Come on. Now, this is, this isn't even Guantanamo Bay, right? Let's see. Out of his mind, everybody keeps saying, "He was out of his mind, he was out of his mind." Uh, and I will even add with that, and this is talking about the attack on Private Cole's, you can have someone who, for whatever reason, they get so enraged where for that moment it does look like the person, you know, is so-called out of their mind because they are so enraged or whatever, uh, especially if it's a moment of violence and, hey, that's what we got here, he's going to kill the nemesis, the enemy, the black male. That doesn't mean that they're crazy at all and we talked about that with Matt Greider as well and he seemed to totally reject any sort of notion of crazy old Joey 22. Let's see. Next. Let's see. Let's see. Oh, so we get the, she, I guess she got the actual, uh, military, like, transcripts and what have you from all of this, uh, since they had to have some sort of disciplinary hearing and all for Christopher and this assault, I guess he could've killed Mr. Cole's here. So they do the Q and A with, let's see, Private Cole's and let's see. He says, oh, so that, this is actually not Private Cole's, this is actually, Private Cole's, I guess, looked similar to this other black male who was there who had, I guess, kidded him or whatever it was, uh, Mr. Coleman, that's it. Uh, I guess they looked similar, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Cole's. So Mr. Coleman goes to give his testimony about what he saw. He says, "Christopher may have mistaken Cole's for me. Last night, twelve one, uh, twenty-one hundred hours, January seventh, seventeen of nineteen eighty-one, I saw that Christopher had wet his bed and I kidded him about it. He didn't say anything to me at the time, that was while we were on the reactionary force. No one else knew about the incident. I think the knife was in his wall locker and he didn't get a chance to get to it until he saw me with Cole's in the barracks. Christopher usually stays by himself and doesn't talk to people much." So even that, in my view, is getting to the genital level again. Uh, you can't control your bowels, uh, and having problems, uh, not erectile dysfunction, but certainly, uh, some problems with your fallacy, uh, with your phallic instrument and you're not a man. Now, I mean, really? You're supposed to be in the military and training and all this with firearms and you're wetting the bed? Oh, my goodness, and then you're gonna be ridiculed by some black males? I gotta be here with these negroes and they're gonna be teasing me about me wetting the bed? Oh, yes, I'm gonna be ready to kill everybody teasing me about my genitals. Uh, and that's right there and that's, Dr. Welsing, she talked about all the time, how quickly it gets to the genital level, how that is a part of white culture. How big is it? Let me see your thing. All of that trepidation and focus on black male genitalia and you got black males teasing me about wetting the bed? Come on. Let's see, they even use that as a metaphor, right? When somebody, if you make a big mistake in public or what have you, it's, "Oh, my God, they wet the bed." Let's see. And he said, they get that in the investigation, Private Christopher had remarked that he was tired of everyone messing with him and that if anyone fucked with him, they would not be fucking around anymore. Dr. Frances Cress Welsing, doesn't she have a whole section on motherfuckers? Now, e- even that, I just said, the homoeroticism of all this, he didn't say, "Hey, I'm tired of you all messing around with me." He didn't say that. "I'm tired of you all fucking around with me and anyone continues fucking with me, they would not be fucking around anymore." Now, that's even curious phrasing, 'cause I don't even hear that. F'ing around anymore, like, really? Hmm. But there's lots of ways that he could've said that, even colorful for, you know, military language, but, wow, and this ends with some sort of bland stabbing of a black male where I think somebody has again been f'ing around with me because I wet the bed? In this old male military environment? Let's see, and then he writes to his mother, uh, "Sunday, January thirty-one, nineteen eighty-one, I could not get away," oh, he was, in fact, "about my situation, I'm here because I stabbed someone pretty bad. They harassed me until I snaked," should be snapped, I guess, "because I kept to myself and read my Bible and prayed. I just could not get away from it and when they noticed, they tried to get closer to me, trying to make out, trying to make out like a wimp and trying to," woo, man, "trying to make out like a wimp and a faggot. They kept harassing me, it was craze, indeed." But, see, even all of that to be writing to my mom. "They're trying to punk me. They're trying to play me like I'm some sort of wimp and a faggot." Now, even, a faggot, spelled F-A-G-U-T? Uh, what do you mean? "They're trying to make out like you're a faggot." Like, are they calling you a faggot? Or did they start saying that because you wet the bed? Is that what, one of the insults? Like, "Oh, my God, we got this faggot here, he's wetting the bed." Was that the insult? Like, I, that's one I would've had to ask a lot more questions, like, what in the world? Especially if all this prompted a stabbing? Let's see. And this, again, back to, he could've been in a crazed state. If all this has been building up and I'm mad about all this and I'm killing black males anyway and now I gotta live with these negroes and half-breeds, mulattoes and all the west of it and they're gonna be mocking me, teasing me about my genitals, problems with my genitals? Yeah, I'm crazy. Not confused about racism, though. She said, "The stabbing of Private Cole's had, of course, become the hot topic of conversation in the barracks." Now, again, that's, that's almost making it seem like the near-killing of this black male is just kinda entertainment, like, ah, since, you know, old, old, old Cole's got stabbed, we got something to talk about, it's been kinda boring around here. Old Jimmy Carter no longer president, what we gonna talk about now? Yeah, we talking, isn't that crazy? He stabbed that nigger, he got that old pair of knife and, ah, he couldn't even get out, boy, he was, like, really? That's what we gonna say? I gotta, any of them sit around and gossip about me being almost killed? They did say they moved Mr. Cole's to a different, uh, location base, I guess, or whatever, but, I mean, other black, I said, we gotta sit around and listen about the black guy being almost killed. Crazy white fella. In, in Georgia with the Atlanta child murder so-called happening. Uh, let's see, the, oh, I thought it was great, the listener who brought up the metaphor where they said they described, uh, Christopher was like a deer, having his legs broken, confused and terrified. I thought that was a great point, uh, because it, is Joseph G. Christopher the victim here? Did he get hit by a car? Were his legs broken? How is he comparable at all to a young deer? We're not watching Bambi here, we're talking about a white killer. Pay attention to those there metaphors. Very good for the listener. Uh, let's see. Great point from Coleman here, so he says, "The next, the next contact of note that Coleman had with Christopher was during the pugil stick training." Homoeroticism again. "A combat exercise in which two recruits use long padded weapons to stimulate fighting hand-to-hand with a rifle. Joe got carried away, Coleman remembered, he just kept coming at me like he wanted to beat me to death. The drill sergeant stopped it and he said to Joe, 'What's wrong with you?'" Once afterward, Claude Coleman would ask, would be asked if he thought Joseph Christopher's behavior toward him had anything to do with his race. Claude was half-black, half-white, so-called. "I didn't think so. It's not like Joe was any friendlier with the white guys." Confusion is lethal. I didn't hear any stories of Joey going berserk during a training, training exercise and mauling some of his white partners. Only non-white people are subjected to violence. Only you and he goes berserk again, uncontrollable, like, let me go, I'll kill him, I'll beat him to death, errr. He says, "Do you think it was racial?" "Oh, no, I don't think it was racial. I'm, I'm half-white, I don't, I don't think it was racial." Why does the question, put it this way, did he attack anyone there who was, like, do it the same way Lieutenant Anderson did? Let's put it this way, do you remember at any time him attacking anybody classified as white? If the answer is no, I think we'll just assume all of these attacks are based on white supremacy racism, even the half-white person, so-called. You're not that adjacent to white people. Let's see. And he, I say, if he's not trying to kill you, then he's being friendlier to the white people, just saying. I'd like some details, what is this altercation where he attempted to assault someone in the mess hall? Like, over what? What, what exactly was said at the mess hall? Hmm, let's see. I was hoping they had footnotes, no footnotes. Man, this book, I wish they had footnotes, brought that up before. Many books that I've excoriated about the lack of footnotes and this certainly would be one because there's so many references in this text. Uh, let's see. They called the facility "The Mental Hygiene Clinic." I do not know how I would feel about that, like, I'm going to the what exactly? Like, the mental hygiene clinic? Everything about that sounds ominous, like, who works here? Nurse Rivers? Like, what? Dr. Kevorkian? Not the one that we talked to? Like, what in the world? Uh, let's see. So he's not eating. Let's see, they say, "Digging deeper, the CID learned that the attack on Private Cole's was not the first time Christopher had caused a buzz in the platoon." Now, see, that again, they got hot gossip and a buzz, we got something cool to talk about 'cause it's so boring and this is the era, we don't have video games and Wi-Fi and Netflix and everything, so at least we got the near-killing, we'll talk about the killings of the negroes in Atlanta and the near-killing of the negroes right here on the base. That'll keep us entertained until we get some new reruns. Uh, let's see. "He had raised other things that raised eyebrows and eventually fists." And again, I look at all this, so, if he had been classified as black, this would've been handled the exact same way. Coming out in his flip-flops, all the rest of it, low aptitude test, all the rest, this would've gone the exact same way. And then, we get through all that, so we heard he's stabbing folks while in the military and you give him some off-time, what does he do? Go home to see his mom, who's right, we got all these letters to his mom, he gets time off, does he go home with his mother? Make sure that she's warm and safe in those cold Buffalo winters? Nope. What's he do? New York City, which is not close to Buffalo at all. That's like, I believe, more than four hundred miles between those two cities, not close at all. He goes to New York City to kill random negroes and a dark-skinned, non-white person. Out of his mind. Uh, so, let's see. All of that, we hear all of this and then more white sympathy. They get in, some of his folks testify that he had, uh, Claude Coleman says, "It bothered me. I mean, this guy who was mentally ill, he had serious problems that wouldn't have been obvious to anyone on the street, but it was clear by now that something was wrong, much deeper in his psyche. He needed to be taken out of the military, out of society, as it turned out, but to torture the guy like that, he didn't deserve that." I think Ernest Jones was tortured. I think Parler Edwards was tortured. Getting beaten with a bar of soap seems like this is standard operating procedure in this environment. I do not call that torture. Guantanamo Bay, that is torture. I didn't hear anything about force-feeding or anything of the like. But again, even though we differ there, all this white identification, my goodness, and then, uh, another barracks mate spoke of the blanket party and the treatment of Private Christopher and general guys picked on him before then, knocking his hat off, smacking him in the back of the head. We go to mess hall and no one would sit with him. I avoided him myself. He's a killer, we should. I always got a weird feeling from it. Gavin DeBecker, the gift of fear. You get that sort of weird vibration, maybe you should stay away from him or her. Kept my distance and so the people I hung out with. There were guys who tormented him, though. He was a fuck-up, a weird... They said, "That F-word again." And there's little or no sympathy for fuck-ups. It's just like high school. Most of the guys were just over high school age, late teens, early twenties. Not much compassion for the oddball. Oh, there's lots of compassion for individuals classified as white. We don't have compassion for Glenn Dunn, Parler Edwards, Ernest Jones, Joseph McCoy, Wendell Barnes. That's who we don't have compassion for. We find a way to be compassionate, even for white killers. We find a teaspoon of love. Even for old Joey. Oddball, whatever that means. Let's see. Um, make sure I did not miss any of the folks who had commentary, any of the folks who dialed in, uh, commentary on the text that you want to make sure you share before we push off to audio segment number two?
I have a quick question, um, in the text, I'm sorry. Um, I'm gonna let you go ahead because I went already.
I have to go, continue.
He said he also shared-
Oh, I can go?
Yeah, he said he also shared. I think everybody already shared.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Um, I just wanna know, does she call him by any nicknames? Um, in the text, I'm talking, um, Joseph, Joseph G. Christopher? Does she call him any other names apart from his, his name?
No, I do not see any nicknames or anything of the sort. Uh, yeah, Private Christopher, she just calls him by his name. No nicknames.
Okay, thank you.
The blanket party incident makes me think that Stanley Kubrick was familiar with Joseph G. Christopher because, um, the movie Full Metal Jacket is almost redated, um, um, what happened, um, from, from the text. And also, like Sergeant Pyle may have been some sort of, um, inspiration or inspired by Joseph G. Christopher, that character Sergeant Pyle. And I'm me and my line.
I think some of these components are pretty widespread, uh, in terms of the military having, you know, the blanket, but the blanket party's for sure very widespread, so I don't know if he would need this for, for that component. Even the general part, I think even that is kind of widespread too, having some loud, foul-mouthed general. That's all the way back to like Patton in World War II. Some of these are just kinda staples for what happens in the military, unfortunately. Remember that for Memorial Day. Other folks? Everybody good? You got everybody? We'll assume folks are satisfied. Uh, no late star six-one, anybody that we missed out on with commentary? Grant, if you did not get to share, write your commentary down and we will have ample time for you to share once the second audio segment concludes. Uh, so we're picking up, we're still in chapter eleven. Catherine Palanero, Absolute Madness. Uh, let's see, actually, since we have time, I will take a moment before we get to it, uh, just throwing in some of the archival information, uh, that is available with this case. Uh, one clip, as I've said, the Atlanta child murders, they were mentioned with this case every day for years. It's amazing how they've been separated. So this is from the Columbian. Uh, April thirty, nineteen eighty-one. "The top report soldier probed in slaying of blacks. The head of a task force investigating the slangs of seven blacks has begun extradition proceedings against Joseph G. Christopher, a white Army private, his attorney says. The move came Wednesday after a grand jury returned a sealed indictment charging an individual with three counts of second-degree murder in three of last year's slangs. Erie County District Attorney Edward C. Cosgrove refused to identify the suspect, saying the name would be revealed after he was extradited from Georgia and arraigned." And it goes on there, gives some of the details. Uh, again, he was a quiet kid. Oh, I'll even give him, "Christopher, twenty-five, a buffalo, who stands a few inches under six feet, dark, has dark curly hair and wears, wears wire-rimmed glasses. He was described by acquaintances as a quiet man, a hunting and fishing enthusiast who reads the Bible frequently in his barracks. He was a quiet kid that you really wouldn't notice that much," said burgard vocational high school principal J. Patrick Curry. "He had a good-average record." I don't even know what that means. A good-average record. Anyway, so that's the top report. The report very beneath it, directly beneath it. "Atlanta raids seek death clues. Seventy-four arrested in police sweep. Authorities were cracking down on prostitutes and petty criminals to extract information about the slangs of twenty-six young blacks, officials said. During police sweeps last weekend, seventy-four people were arrested on charges ranging from sodomy to the possession of drugs and firearms, officials said Wednesday. The people rounded up in the sweeps were then questioned about the rash of slangs since July nineteen seventy-nine, officials said. Atlanta Mayor Maynard Jackson told reporters, 'Police have sent the word through the criminal element to fill in police on any information about the slangs. Although the criminals don't like the heat we're giving them,' Jackson said. So far, informants have not given any information to a police task force.'" It goes on to give more details. I will stop there. Uh, but these cases were mentioned right there. We even heard about the use of informants, uh, in the Buffalo case, not to solve the murders of black people, to solve the murder of Terrence Mills, a white man. But yeah, just one of the many, many times these cases were right together, and now no memory of the Buffalo slangs at all. Now we'll get to audio segment two, Catherine Palanero, Absolute Madness. Context of White Supremacy, audio segment two.
January eleventh, nineteen eighty-one. "Mom, if you wondered why my voice sounds funny over the phone, it because tear came to my eyes when I hear your voice or write to you. It makes me feel so good. I do not have much to say, except that I try to say the rosary at night and always pray that you and everybody is okay. Please tell them I sent my love. Truly, Joseph G. Christopher." Leonard Coles recalled that the frequency of Christopher's strange behavior had stepped up after Christmas leave, leading up to the shower-shoe debacle and the stabbing. "When we got back from Christmas, that's when he was weirder than ever. He started carrying the Bible with him everywhere, even to KP duty, which he seemed to love. And that was strange, too. Most of us didn't want KP, washing dishes and peeling potatoes. Our MOS, Military Occupation Specialty, was eleven Bravo. We were infantry men and KP was a nuisance, but he seemed to like it. One of the platoon sergeants even brought it up once, said to him, 'Christopher, maybe you should have chosen an MOS as a cook.'" Come to find out later that he was stealing stuff from the kitchen. He had a stash up under the barracks, a survival kit. The CID was trying to figure out when and how he did this. Coles remembered other oddities. Joe accused someone of taking something from him, shaving cream, soap, something real common like we all had. He thought someone went into his wall locker. That complaint went all the way up to the platoon sergeant. One night he was caught in the latrine shaving all the hair off his body, under his armpits, everything. Another time they caught him in there reading the Bible after lights out. We thought he was doing whatever he could to get attention. I started to think he was trying to get put out of the Army. At one point, there was talk about whether he could be transferred to another platoon, but we were close to graduation, and he had completed everything he needed to go on to the next phase. That became another source of concern because the next phase was AIT, Advanced Individual Training, where you have more liberty. Everybody was like, okay, he's weird enough with restrictions on him. How weird is he going to get without restrictions? We were moving on to weapons qualification, and that made us nervous, since now we're going from a guy being weird around the barracks to being weird around a weapon. Dear Mom, I spoke to someone that you wrote to. Please try not to worry. I know that it is hard, but I know that God will see me and guide me. I have fasted since noon Friday, except for an apple, Saturday morning, and I am not going to eat until Monday morning. Mom, I lay here awake half the night, saying the rosary, planning and dreaming about starting over. I have made plans for the house, too. It's the only thing that makes me feel good. Mom, I have found out that I can live on meat, apples, and I love soup. I will learn to hunt with a bow. I know that I can find a job if I have to. I also need to find a good woman. This world is not going to beat me. I am not insane. I know what I need to be happy. I have asked God to make it happen for me. Also, I want to learn how to make candles. When the sun goes down, I will have my meal by candle. That is what I think freedom is. In God I trust. Joseph." Just writing this last part of this letter has unkeyed me. They have been on my case about not eating. My fingernail and skin are in good condition, so I do not think I have any deficiency. See you, love you. Joseph. Five March, eighty-one. Admitted to MAC Ward B-four for observation after periodic refusal to consume meals. Twenty-eight March, eighty-one. Escaped from custody while on work detail in dayroom of Ward B-four at oh-nine fifty-five hours. Apprehended by military police at nineteen thirty hours. Three April, eighty-one. Released from MAC Ward B-four and returned to detention facility. Eight April, eighty-one. Placed in admin seg using minimum necessary force after several instances of refusing to obey guards' orders. The men in his platoon had seemed loosely divided into two camps when it came to Private Christopher. Those who bullied him and those who avoided him. Private Coles had been in the latter. Coles had not participated in the blanket party. The question then remained why Christopher had attacked him and so brazenly. It seemed that a rational explanation might not be found. It also became increasingly obvious to the Army that an attorney was not the only type of professional help that Private Christopher needed. A prisoner screamed. He shared a cell with Joseph Christopher, who had just been released from segregation that morning, April tenth. Christopher had gotten hold of a razor blade. Though he wasn't using the blade on his cellmate, the man was nonetheless frantic. "Guards, guards!" The cellmate screamed. "He's cutting his dick off!" "Mom, this is the last letter I am writing. I am not strong. When I open my mouth, the words are twisted. They are shaped by whoever I am, talking to good by to you. My trusted friends, I knew you since I was nine or ten. Goodbye. Goodbye." On April fourteenth, CID agents Tom Carr spoke with Nurses Bernard Burgess and Dorothy Anderson. He took sworn statements from them. He spoke to Private Christopher, or tried to. Christopher replied to every question with, "I don't wanna talk about it." Carr reread a teletype that had recently come over the wire at CID. It concerned a series of killings of black men in Buffalo and New York City that had occurred in the fall and winter of nineteen eighty, eighty-one. Private Joseph G. Christopher of Buffalo was white. The victim of the barracks stabbing, Leonard Coles, was black, as was Private Cloud, who may have been Christopher's intended victim. The prisoner whom Christopher had attacked twice in the stockade was black, as was the guard whom he had fought. Christopher had used a pen to stab a Puerto Rican guard, hitting the guard above the right eye. Agent Carr picked up the phone and called the Buffalo homicide squad. Chapter twelve. Teresa Christopher worried about her son. Things were terribly wrong, and to make matters worse, he was nine hundred miles away from her. Teresa was fifty-three years old, a diminutive woman with red hair turning gray. She lived in a gray clabbered house on Weber Avenue on Buffalo's far east side, a pleasant if prosaic neighborhood lined with similarly modest middle-class homes on small parcels of land. Teresa had lived her whole life in Buffalo, and in this home for almost twenty years, since nineteen sixty-two, when she and her husband Nicholas had bought the four-bedroom house and moved in with their four young children. Nicholas had died five years earlier, in nineteen seventy-six, at which time their three older offspring, daughters Sophia and Lorraine, and son Joseph, were in their twenties. The youngest child, Angela, had been in her early teens. The loss of Nicholas had been a cataclysmic blow for the family. They had fared all right financially, since Teresa worked as a registered nurse and received her late husband's veterans benefits. But emotionally, psychologically, the family had lost its master and guide. Nicholas Christopher had been a strong man, a dominant figure who presided over his household with conviction and unshakable self-assurance. His wife Teresa was a gentle soul, sweet and spiritual, who looked up to her husband and relied on his judgment. She depended on him so greatly that she hadn't even learned how to drive a car until after his death. Her niece Louise gave her driving lessons after Nick passed away. The presence of Nicholas still permeated the home. His work benches in the garage and basement, his myriad tools. He had owned every crafting instrument and power tool imaginable. His hunting gear and gun collection, all had been kept intact. Lights were kept low or off in the living room, where a photo of him sat atop the mantle with votive candles before it that were often lit. Despite the ubiquitous visual reminders, though, the absence of Nicholas still seemed to be all too painfully felt and much mourned by the family he'd left behind. Now more than ever, perhaps, Teresa may have longed to have Nick with her, to decide how best to handle the crisis with their only son, confined in a faraway Army stockade down in Georgia. Teresa had been stunned when she received the letter from Joe back in January telling her what had happened. She had never known Joe, Joey, as they had fondly called him, to be violent. He had had struggles in his young life, and of course, there had been the adolescent phase of rebellion, but even that had been comparatively mild, much less than some parents had to contend with for sure. And there had never been anything like this, never any real trouble, certainly never anything criminal. The fact that Joe now stood charged with a crime, and such a serious one, was unfathomable. The fact that it had happened in the Army made it doubly heartbreaking. She'd had such hopes that the Army would be the solution to Joe's problems. All through the summer of nineteen eighty, Joe had been very depressed. He couldn't find steady work. He seemed always preoccupied, troubled and down on himself. It reached the point where he became uncommunicative to the extreme, sometimes going for days at a time without speaking or even acknowledging when others would speak to him. He had enlisted in the army last fall, about two months after he turned twenty-five, which made him a little older than many new recruits, but still young enough to embark on what Teresa had hoped would be a positive and fulfilling new course for his life. Joe had called home on January seventeenth, the day before he'd been arrested. He had sounded very upset during that phone call. He told his mother that he missed home and that things weren't going very well, although he didn't elaborate. He broke down and cried. He mentioned that he had a night detail and probably wouldn't be able to make it to mass the next day. Then came the bad news about his arrest and the letters, the bizarre unsettling letters to her, to his sisters, and to neighbors that scared her more than anything else. Being away from her son in his time of distress was hard, but it was equally difficult for Teresa to be in the dark about what was happening with him or in him. Her only source of information was Joe's letters home, which had become so rambling, so disjointed, and very disturbing as a reflection of his state of mind. To most people, his letters were bewildering. To a mother with a background in psychiatric nursing, they were not only alarming, but telling. Teresa had done a lot of reflecting herself. She had come to the realization that Joe's problems ran much deeper than she'd thought. Teresa Christopher's two devotions in life had always been her family and her church. Teresa came from a sprawling Irish household of ten children, in which she was one of nine daughters. Her husband Nicholas had also been born in Buffalo, a first-generation son of Italian immigrants. Teresa and Nicholas Christopher had lived their lives surrounded by a multitude of family at the center of which, of course, were their own children. Their oldest daughter Sophia was married with babies of her own and lived a few blocks away. Lorraine and Angela lived at home with Teresa, as had Joe until he left for the military. Up until Joe ran into such trouble in January, Teresa had spent much of her waking hours in the comfortable routine she'd always known, dividing her time between her nursing job at nearby Deaconess Hospital and at Saint Lawrence Roman Catholic Church around the corner from her home. She now spent a good portion of her off-hours seeking help for her beleaguered son. In February, she began writing to various people at Fort Benning. One of the earliest letters she penned was a frank heartfelt plea to Joe's commanding officer, in which she explained a little of her son's background and his behavior, leading up to his enlistment in the army, along with some conclusions she had since come to concerning the nature of his problems. Dear sir, I am writing to you in regard to my son Joseph G. Christopher, who was arrested on a charge of aggravated assault and is in the post-stockade. I feel you should know that there is apparently a possibility that he has become a manic-depressive schizophrenic. I say this because I have worked with people with this illness in my training as a registered nurse at Gowanda State Hospital. I have noticed in the last two or three years that he has been more and more introspective, asocial, and self-deprecating. His personality seemed to start changing drastically after the death of his father. His dad died at the age of fifty-four after two open-heart surgery operations. I think he blames himself for his father's death because he had argued with him about the way repair work should be done on our house, et cetera. His father had known that his life would be short because of his heart problem and was often impatient with Joe, and seldom complimented him on any job that he had done. She wrote of Joe's depression over the past year and his unemployment, that he had broken up with his girlfriend and had taken to visiting his father's grave on a daily basis. She described how Joe had denigrated himself repeatedly the previous summer, telling his mother that he was no good and wished he was dead. She explained that Joe's decision to enter the army had come about from a suggestion his late father had made years before. Nicholas Christopher had served in the infantry during World War Two. Joe had once asked his father what he should do after high school, and Nicholas had suggested the army, thinking the discipline would be good for him. Joe had in fact tried to enlist some years before, but had been turned down because of a hernia. Joe had saved money for an operation and tried again after the hernia was surgically repaired. Because he had been unable to find steady work, Joe hadn't been able to contribute monetarily to the family. Though she hadn't needed his money, Teresa wrote, Joe had felt it was his responsibility to care for her and his two sisters. Being unable to do so made him feel inadequate. She detailed how Joe had radically changed his diet in the past year, fasting for days at a time and then eating only raw vegetables, uncooked oatmeal and bread that he would bake himself. To her surprise, he also became very religious. She believed he was having a mental breakdown brought on by a post-traumatic grief reaction to the death of his father and an improper diet. In closing, she wrote, I am sorry for what Joe did, and I cannot imagine what provoked it, but I think he needs psychiatric and medical help as well as the help of a good lawyer. I would greatly appreciate your help in this matter, and I would appreciate hearing from you either by mail or by phone. The responding officer suggested that Teresa write to Major Morgan, Joe's military attorney. She did so a few days ahead of the February seventeenth preliminary hearing, at which time it would be decided whether or not Joe would be court-martialed. She gave Major Morgan much the same information. Apparently, Joe would tell him nothing at all, in the hope that it would be helpful to Morgan in understanding Joe's long and deep-seated state of depression. She added some of Joe's good points as well, mentioning his skills in carpentry, mechanics and welding, and the fact that he'd become very religious. She stressed that Joseph had never been in any trouble and that the assault charge was still a matter of confusion to her. Teresa also wrote of something she'd recently learned. Last summer, Joe had confided to a friend that he feared he was going crazy. Peter Tramontina had been Joe's best friend for a decade. They had grown up together, and Peter still lived in the neighborhood. Peter had come to see Teresa after hearing about Joe's arrest. Joe had written a letter to neighbor Carlo Bianchi, asking for help, finding a lawyer. Carlo and Lydia Bianchi were an elderly Italian couple who had known Joe and Peter since they were kids. As a teenager and adult, Joe had often helped the Bianchis with tasks like home repairs and shoveling snow. The Bianchis wanted to help, but they hadn't known what to do. They were older and their English wasn't the best. Mrs. Bianchi showed the letter to Peter, who then went to Teresa. She told him about the situation in Georgia, which stunned Peter as much as it had the family. And that's when Peter told her what Joe had said the previous summer, about his fear that he was losing his mind. Peter had suggested to Joe that he get medical help. Joe had stopped confiding in Peter after that. Peter had noticed some strange behavior from Joe on the rare occasions when he saw him. On hot summer days, Joe would be bundled up in heavy clothing, and there was the thing with his hair, how he'd suddenly started cutting it so short, sometimes nearly shaving his head bald. Teresa remained largely unaware of what was happening down at Fort Benning. She managed to glean some information as it became clear to the army that her help would be needed in deciphering and hopefully managing her son's erratic behavior. She learned that Joe had stopped eating while in the stockade and that it reached the point where he'd had to be tube-fed. The tube-feeding had apparently so traumatized him that he went to the other extreme, gorging himself at times and grabbing food off other people's trays. In addition to placing him in the B four ward for observation and group therapy, the army had him seeing a psychiatrist, Major Eleanor Law. Teresa wrote letters to Major slash Dr. Law and spoke with her on the phone. She gave her the overview of Joe's background and further detailed some of the changes they had seen in him. Within the past year, he had suddenly developed a strong aversion to the nickname Joey. He insisted on being called Joe or Joseph instead. That seemed an odd turnabout because nearly everyone, family, friends, neighbors, called him Joey and always had. While home on Christmas leave, he had yelled at one of his sisters for calling him Joey. Teresa hadn't thought much of it at the time. Perhaps he just felt that Joey was too infantile and he wasn't a child anymore. The sudden objection to his lifetime nickname wouldn't have amounted to anything by itself, of course, but there were other things. All through the spring and summer of nineteen eighty, in addition to his self-doubts and self-loathing, Joe seemed beset by anxiety and odd apprehensions. There were times when he would be gripped by an ephemeral fear that he wouldn't or couldn't explain, and he wanted his mother to sit and hold his hand. He asked her what the difference was between right and wrong. Sometimes he told his mother that he didn't understand how she could still love him. Joe had begun retreating from people before this. He broke up with his girlfriend with whom he had been living and moved back home in late nineteen seventy-eight, when he was twenty-three, and stayed in the house more and more of the time. In March of nineteen seventy-nine, he had been fired from his maintenance job at Canisius College, except for a brief stint at Carhart Photo some months later. Joe had been unemployed since. For reasons that were difficult to discern, he had lately become overwhelmed with renewed grief over his father's death, though it had occurred years before. He seemed to have grown somewhat obsessed by it. He said he could no longer stand to be around his friends, whose fathers were still living, because he felt jealous of them. Joseph, who was twenty years old when Nick passed, had been very close to his dad. Nick had been a scoutmaster for Joe's Boy Scout troop. His father taught him many trades, how to make or repair this or that, and took him hunting and fishing. Then there was the cabin. When Joe was a boy, Nick purchased some land out in the country, in a place called Ellington, about sixty miles outside Buffalo. Together, father and son had built a two-story cabin on the property, complete with electricity and plumbing. The Christoffers had spent many summer weekends at the cabin, which was Nick's pride and joy. Joe had always loved being there, and when he got older and could drive, he'd take his buddies out for hunting and camping. That had caused a problem at one point when Joe was in high school. Nick had given Joe an old car to drive himself to and from school. Teresa explained that there had been a lot of racial tension in the city schools at the time, the early nineteen seventies, because of the new integration policies. And Nick let Joe drive because there was a lot of fighting on the bus. Joe started skipping school and taking his friends hunting instead. When Nick discovered this, he was furious. He flew into a rage and smashed the stock of Joe's prized shotgun, which Nick had given him as a gift for his sixteenth birthday. According to Teresa, the fight had ended with both father and son crying and hugging. Teresa believed that Joe's issues with food had come about from an irrational sense of guilt he felt over his father's death. Joe had convinced himself that his arguments with his father and his failures as a son had exacerbated Nick's heart condition, which Teresa assured him had not been the case. His father's heart problems had been a result of having contracted malaria while in the army during World War Two. Nick had required a salt-free diet, and thus, salt had never been used in their home. Joe's distaste for army food could have come about initially because he found the food too salty. The self-imposed deprivation, she felt, could be Joe's way of punishing himself. Teresa asked Major Law if it was okay to send Joe some items he had requested. He wanted some wool socks, a book on learning to play guitar and guitar strings, and a pair of bowling shoes. Teresa knew she couldn't send the guitar strings, but asked if it was all right to send him the socks and bowling shoes. Joe had written that he didn't feel comfortable wearing shower shoes. Teresa tried to keep Joe's army troubles quiet, but word of his arrest and mental breakdown had spread. Lee Chamberlain Senior, whose sons had been close friends of Joe back in high school, called her to ask about Joe, as had Donna Van Alden, Joe's former girlfriend. Teresa had politely rebuffed their inquiries and wouldn't give them his address, explaining that Joe couldn't have contact with many people right now. Teresa and her daughters meanwhile kept writing to Joe, offering encouragement and love. One of the few people outside the family whom Teresa would speak to about her son was Laverne Becker, her next-door neighbor. Mr. Becker, whose nickname was Red, was a middle-aged bachelor who had lived on Weber Avenue even before the Christoffers and had known the family since the day they moved in. Nick and Red Becker had become close friends. Red had always been very fond of the Christopher children and was particularly close to Joe. Red had taken Joe under his wing after Nick's death, trying to somewhat fill the role of substitute father. Red and Joe had spent many hours sitting on the older man's porch, talking. They had exchanged some letters after Joe joined the army early on, when Joe's letters were ordinary, optimistic, filled with the usual chatty-type things a young soldier might write home. Red had later received letters that he could barely understand. He gave them to Joe's mother. Teresa told Red that she wished she had recognized Joe's depression earlier and gotten him some help. She had believed that all he really needed was a good job. She had thought that if Joe just had that, a steady respectable vocation, everything else would smooth out for him. Obviously, she had been wrong, and now she wasn't sure what to do other than to keep praying and keep imploring her son to work with the psychiatrist and his military attorney, particularly the former. Though she had accepted that her son was ill, the crime of which he stood accused, ambushing and stabbing a man, still mystified her. Brashness and bellicosity had never been threads of Joseph's personality. He had rather been almost the antithesis of aggression, much to his father's chagrin. Nicholas Christopher was a man's man, a consummate outdoorsman, hunter, craftsman and gun collector. Nick was not physically imposing in stature. He stood only five feet six and weighed over two hundred pounds, but in mindset and bearing, he was every bit the alpha male. He was a man who knew his own mind and wasn't afraid to speak it. He had worked for the city as a maintenance man and had always earned his living by the labor of his own hands. Though raised in the city, Nick preferred the sovereignty of pristine countryside and the rugged pleasures of living off the land. He once owned a horse and always kept hunting dogs. Along with his considerable skills in carpentry and construction, he had developed talents in both wood and leatherworking and made hats and purses from leather. The only modern technologies that really interested him were tools and firearms, and he kept an extensive collection of each. He had married Teresa in nineteen fifty when he was twenty-nine, a little older than was customary for men of his generation to marry. And in July of nineteen fifty-five, they had their third child and only boy, Joseph. Nick had been very involved in his son's life. He spent a lot of time with the boy, teaching and instilling in him the same passion for the outdoors and sought to shape him into the man he thought he should be. The father-son devotion appeared to be mutual. However, as can often be the case when a strong-willed man pours his undivided efforts into an only son, there were conflicts. Joseph and Nicholas were polar opposites in temperament. Joey was a docile boy, quiet and retiring, and not particularly competitive. He wasn't assertive, he wasn't a leader, he wasn't Zack. When Joe was thirteen, his pretty cousin Louise had married Zack Defusco, a strapping young man who had just graduated from the Buffalo Police Academy. Zack was perhaps everything Joey wished he could be, tall, confident, popular and personable, and very well-liked by Nick. Prior to becoming a police officer, Zack had served in the army during the Vietnam War. Zack shared his Uncle Nick's interest in guns. He visited the Christopher home often and participated in many spirited conversations about army days, firearms and the world in general. Joe was included in these friendly talks, but being much younger and less experienced, he naturally couldn't contribute on the same level and did more listening than talking. This wouldn't necessarily have been a bad or unusual thing for a teenage boy with much to learn from older males, had Nick not constantly abraded him in front of Zack and anyone else, for all the character traits he felt Joey lacked. Nick's admiration for his nephew had not been lost on Joey, nor apparently was the realization on Joey's part that he would never be Zack's equal when it came to some of the hyper-masculine traits his father held. of the hyper-masculine traits his father held dear.
Context of white supremacy. So that is where we will pick up at for next week. We're still in chapter twelve, masculinity. Anywho, the number to dial, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, the code five-six-four-nine-four-three, pound, press star six-one if you would like to participate. The email untiljustice@gmail.com, untiljustice@gmail.com. Do not wait till the last moment until, or if you have commentary questions that you would like to ask, go ahead and get a hand up now. Number again, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, the code five-six-four-nine-four-three, pound, press star six-one if you would like to participate. I'll read a few of our emailed questions really quick and then have the folks who dialed in. I'll start with the people who did not get a share at all the first time. Make sure we include them and then make sure that we get everybody else. One of our investors who wrote in, get the rest of his questions in or, I guess, commentary in now. The rest of chapter eleven, because we didn't get everything, so number eight from chapter eleven. "We were moving on to weapons qualification, and that made us nervous, since now we're going from a guy being weird around the barracks to being weird around a weapon. I have heard such fears expressed by family members in the military when they are around recruits with strange behaviors. Something to consider when deciding to enlist, absolutely." Who are you gonna have to bunk with? Chapter twelve, number one. Joe, in high school, a lot of racial tension in the city schools at the time, early nineteen seventies, because of the new integration policies. Very consistent that the author describes these acts of racism, white supremacy, and white terrorism as racial tension. That's in the book we'll discuss on Sunday. Get to that later. Number two, Nick flew into a rage and smashed the stock of Joe's prized shotgun. Nicholas Christopher was a man's man, a consummate outdoorsman, hunter, craftsman, and gun collector, every bit the alpha male. Was Christopher's father physically violent towards his family? He was certainly verbally abusive towards him. Certainly seems plausible. Hmm. Now, who would have records, especially this time? This is way, like, decades before O.J. Simpson was the poster child, as they say, for abuse, so I don't even know. Like, they, that sort of thing might not even be recorded for a white family at this time, unless it was really bad. So if there's no police record, the only people that would know this would be, like, Joey Christopher's other sisters, or his mother, who I suspect has passed away by now, so, I mean, yeah, who would even know? But that is something to ponder. Was he physically abusive, violent in the household? Man's man. Number three. Oh, we didn't get that far, didn't get that far. Yep, didn't get that far, had to stop. Get there next week. Didn't get that far in chapter twelve. All right, for the folks who called in, star six-one, folks, we did not hear from at all. We'll start there and then we'll go and get everybody else. So, right now, these are all folks we did not hear the first time around, Bay Area Mom, Non Clemson Grad and/or Miss C.
Bay Area Mom can go first if she's available.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for taking my call. So, um, I, I was interested in how the mom, boy, the mom, the way she takes care, takes up for her son, and how she just diagnosed him with, what was it, manic depressive schizophrenia? She said he was a manic depressive schizophrenic, and, um, you know, because she's the nurse, so she's seen some of those, and now, all of a sudden, that is the description of her son, since he got that assault, um, charge, and, um, how she wrote the officer, and... Oh, uh, his dad died, two open-heart surgeries, blah, blah, and he's been through so much, just, you know, have mercy on him, and he helped me find him in the journey. And it's like, okay, well, here, let me let you talk to him, and then you go, and I would appreciate if you would respond back. I thought that was, um, interesting, how white women, they use certain words to let you know that you must respond, you must help, you must do something, because I'm crying out, and I support my story, and this is why, and I just don't understand. I'm scratching my head that you're saying here, assault, I, sure, him, and then the letters that he would write his mom, and, uh, how... I wonder with God and, uh, how they look at their deeds and how, you know, I've been fast, started fasting, and, you know, I can live off of mommy and peanut butter. I don't know what he said, I think he said meat and, uh, but anyway, how they feel regardless of whatever they do, they're worthy of going to, uh, heaven, white heaven, of course, with all the, you know, all the whites, you know, and that doing harm to us, especially if you going by the Bible, the way they have it written, to make it seem as if it's okay for you to treat us like this, and then we're supposed to obey, you know, them, and then her being a dark-hearted religious person, how he can just always get to her with religion, like, you know, going to church and the mass and all this stuff, he can always revert back, and then when he needs something or he wants her attention, he'll just pull out that religion stuff, and she's just, you know, right there pulls him in, and it also made me think that he was a little mama's, uh, mama's, uh, boy, that he was real close to his mom, because that baby was his only son, that was hers, too, and while he's out lumberjacking and being his alpha male, and he has to work, you know, to earn his living and take care of the home and so forth, so I'm sure he's out at least eight, ten hours of the day, so he's spending time with mom, and he's more like mom and the girls versus, uh, the dad, I forgot his name, Nick's Nicholas or something, I don't know. So, anyway, um, and then, uh, and then the nephew, strapping Zack. So, uh, then the comparison to him, and I know he really felt even small to being, you know, because I'm sure he adored his dad, right, his dad adored him, and I know this man was violent. Why wouldn't he be violent, especially with that little wussy son? So I'm sure that would be frustrating, um, for him, and I can see him, no, like this, no, Joey, and, you know, whatever, and I'm sure, you know, when he hit the gun, he was mad at him about that, and, um, he probably couldn't beat him up no more, especially after a couple, you know, at least the second surgery, he probably had to lay off, you know, hitting on him, and then whatever, the, uh, uh, integration in the seventies in school did with him, and, um, however, that made him feel it was deeper than somebody taking, uh, whatever his dad's guns or whatever he said happened with the guns, it's bigger than that, um, to me. I believe it has more to do with him, looking at him, and him not being the structure, the strapping, especially compared to other black males as well. He had a lot of other envious, and the black male, I'm sure, was one of them. So I'll mute my line, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and, uh, yeah.
Much obliged, Bay Area Mom. Thank you kindly, Non Clemson Grad, for yielding.
All right, cool. Good evening to everyone. Um, it's just me this evening, as my wife has fallen asleep. All right, so let's see, um, just like the person who wrote in, I definitely acknowledge the part about weird, weird at the barracks to weird with guns. Now, obviously, there are plenty of weird people, but, um, you know, what was the behavior before the weapons, right, becomes the question. Let's see, um, I think about, like, um, there was an example, I think back to the idea that, you know, for example, when white people started getting access to guns and they started doing the things like open carry, like, for example, um, New York, um, Supreme Court knocking down, uh, New York City's laws of concealed carry. When white people carry guns, um, you know, they're just allowed to walk around, uh, but when you see a black person carrying a gun, all of a sudden, the police get called and the police respond with great, uh, military-grade weaponry. Um, with the part about the general mutilation, it reminded me of the interview you did back with, um, a woman named Judith Bryson several years ago, about Alfred Kinsey and all the convergence that were happening with him. Um, uh, I think the mother talked about him, um, the son Joey, getting more, you know, getting better, maybe developing better, you know, people skills, by hopefully getting a job or joining the military, but it's very possible that when he ended up in those situations where he got a job, or he ended up in the military, it probably exacerbated his mental condition that allowed him to engage in, uh, very, very unfortunate acts that he engaged in. Um, but, um, the mom, the mom apologizing for the crimes that, um, Joey committed, at least to me, comes with nothing more than this, an excuse for the overall behavior that the son is, um, you know, um, engaged in, the murders, the violent, you know, the violent acts, everything, uh, maybe even laying that, that groundwork for that insanity offense. Um, but, um, and while at the same time playing ignorant, like, how could this have happened? We didn't see it coming, while still giving examples of all the things that he was doing up until those moments, like, uh, you know, not being audible for days at a time when people would, um, clearly noticeably talk to him, he just wouldn't respond, like he wasn't even, like, they weren't even there. Um, or, for example, you know, he didn't want to be called Joey anymore, Joey anymore, he wants to be called Joe or Joseph, because of whatever reason, thought that was more mature, and of course, a myriad of other examples as well, too, just, um, emotional tantrums coming out of a grown man who eventually got access to weapons and military training. And, um, before I mute my line, A Gus on Black Talk Radio, the book study from last week on June twenty-third is not available. Uh, my wife wasn't able to catch it last week, she wanted to catch up, but I was unable to because it wasn't available, so with that, I'll mute my line.
Much obliged. I will go back and double-check and make sure, uh, it gets updated or whatever, see why it's not playing or what have you, at Black Talk Radio Network. I know it should be, uh, on many other outlets. I'll go back and repost and make sure that folks can access it, and we'll double-check for Black Talk Radio Network as well. Uh, let's see, folks that we missed, well, I guess not missed totally, people that already got to share the first time around, if you have additional comments, uh, lines should be open. Just listening or nothing stood out, maybe, from the second audio segment?
Um, we got a shotgun for his sixteenth birthday. Reminded me of Ethan Plumlee, a pretty recent, uh, white terrorist who, um, got a firearm for his birthday, and he used that firearm to, um, attempt to kill people, I don't know, care of a car, he didn't kill people. The discussion started off with, um, he's cutting his, um, quote, dick off, and that's, um, right there, the attacking of the phallus, that's a wealthy moment. Why is it in a person's mind or genetic makeup, whatever, to attack something that is supposed to, um, produce life and, and is one of the reasons for, um, us being here? You need a, a male phallus and a vagina to come to planet Earth. Why is it that, um, white people have such a incorrect relationship with these things? Why do they, um, want to attack these things? Very incorrect, you know, telling of the sort of, um, beings we're dealing with. And that's just, this is a fascinating study, and, um, and I think it's, it's definitely deliberate that this person is not, uh, well-known because of a number of, um, black people, even highly confused black people, I suspect, knew about this guy, knew what he was up to, they do some thinking, they ask some question. Why is he trying to chop his dick off, and he's sad? He's only attacking black people, chopping off, chopping off hearts? This is weird, like, even more accused of black people would be saying things like this. This is the way race men or race women have to be, their excellent job of keeping individuals like him a secret, and I'll pause my line.
Pause this line. Reading is more important than watching television. Now, this is one given, we, now, we are only about halfway through the book. I'm very sure much of the information that we've heard in this first fifty percent is not in the forty-five-minute FBI files YouTube video. I could be mistaken. Other folks dial in, commentary that they wanted to share? Folks satisfied? Maybe everybody's satisfied? All right, let's see, I'll get to my notes. I was gonna see, since, uh, Non Clemson Grad, his area of study with urban planning and all that, I was gonna see if he is familiar with Cynthia Wiggins. I had posted about that, learned about her, maybe I will read a little bit of Johnny Cochran if we have time, but we'll get to notes first. Let's see, for...
Unfortunately, I am not familiar.
Oh, you're not familiar? We got the answer, he is not familiar. Much obliged, sir. Okay, so we get to the end of chapter eleven. They said it again, Christopher, who had just been released from segregation, that I just find that so significant, that the area of punishment in the armed services, at least that time, is the administrative segregation? Segregation, they, like, man, what the, hmm. Anyway, uh, chapter eleven, very end of chapter eleven, so they do all of this, and is this racist? What's going on? Why is he doing? Private Joseph G. Christopher Buffalo was white, the victim of the barracks stabbing Leonard Coles was black, as was Private Cloud, who may have been Christopher's intended victim for teasing him about wetting the bed, remember? The prisoner whom Christopher had attacked twice in the Stockade was black, as was the guard whom he fought. Christopher had used a pin to stab a Puerto Rican guard, hitting the guard above the right eye, literally trying to stab him in the eye. All non-white males. You're not the, and he's aware, like, to be asked sternly under questioning, did you stab any white people? Mm-hmm. We get to chapter twelve. They have whole, uh, articles, just like they do with Peyton Gendron, about, wow, he came from here in Conquillan, like, same thing with, wow, Weaver Avenue in Buffalo, and they show people walking by pointing at the house, like, oh, my God, that guy was right here. I'll post some of those articles, so you can see that if you're interested. Uh, let's see. Teresa had been stunned when she received a letter from Joe back in January telling her what had happened. She had never known Joe, Joey, as they had finally called him to be violent. I thought that was funny, because at first, I was thinking that, no count Matt Greider, he lied to us, white man, because he said... Stuck in my throat. Something stuck in my throat, pardon. I asked Matt Greider why his book is called Joey 22, and he said that Christopher hated being called, uh, Joey. And so then, when I read this, and they said, oh, the family, they finally called him Joe. He's like, oh, see, he lied, he lied, he was trying to be our friends, and I had to read a little more, like, okay. Not quite. Um, and then they said he had this adolescent phase of rebellion. That must be something for white children exclusively. Tamir Rice, Michael Brown, they don't get a adolescent phase of rebellion? Because, I mean, that can include a whole lot. That can include, like, killing black people, and terrorism, Mark Wahlberg terrorizing non-white people. Like, that can include a lot for individuals classified as white. Uh, let's see, all through the summer of 1980, Joey had been very depressed. He couldn't find steady work. He seemed always preoccupied, troubled, and down on himself. He almost sounds niggerized. That's being a black male in East Buffalo. Rick James, one thing about the ghetto, you don't have to hurry. It'll be bad tomorrow. Brother, don't you worry. No jobs, concentrated poverty. Cynthia Wiggins deliberately routed public, public transportation to keep you away from jobs and opportunities. Call it spatial segregation. All of that with the niggers deliberately in Buffalo, but not having a job, no prospects for the future. What am I gonna do? Being down on myself? Not feeling like a man? They've done that to generations of black people in Buffalo, black males especially. They don't go around mutilating their penis, hunting and killing white people, or anybody else, cutting hearts out of people. Haven't read about that in Buffalo. Let's see. Then came the bad news about his arrest and the letters, the bizarre unsettling letters to her, his sisters, and to neighbors that scared her more than anything else. I wonder what he was writing to the neighbors? To get that, she said it was equally dark for Teresa to be in the dark about what was happening with him. All the metaphors, again, suggesting something ominous, evil, ignorant about blackness, black people. Let's see. Again, niggerized, that's what it sounded like. Because he had been unable to find steady work, Joe hadn't been able to contribute monetarily to the family, though she had needed his money. Teresa wrote, Joey felt it was his responsibility to care for her and his two sisters. Being unable to do so made him feel inadequate. That is generations of black males in Buffalo and beyond. They don't go out butchering and cutting out people's hearts as a result. You just eat bad food, and name call, and do other self-destructive things, mostly. Listen to Rick James. She detailed how Joe had radically changed his diet in the past years, fasting for days at a time, then eating only raw vegetables, uncooked oatmeal, and bread. When he read in Lucky with Alice Sebo, she had all those bizarre rituals. Remember, she went on that only eating white food diet? This is a little better, because there are some vegetables in there, but raw oatmeal? Like, sounds kinda hard on the stomach. Uh, let's see. They do have recipes. We had at the yoga retreat in DC, where you can do overnight oatmeal, where it's, uh, you don't have to cook it on the stove. You just, uh, put it in the refrigerator overnight, and voila. Let's see. Teresa remained largely unaware of what was happening down at Fort Benning. She managed to glean some information as it became clear to the army that her help would be needed in deciphering and hopefully managing her son's erratic behavior. She learned that Joey had stopped eating while in the stockade, and that it reached the point where he'd had to be tube fed. And I cracked up laughing, because I had just mentioned, this is not torture and all the rest of it. And then they are force-feeding him, but for very different reasons, uh, because he's refusing to eat, and they're feeling like it might be a problem. But I did crack up, uh, laughing at that. Uh, the tube feeding had apparently so traumatized him that he went to the other extreme, gorging himself at times and grabbing food off other people's trays. Now, I am waiting, I think pretty much everything, for the most part, uh, that I have wanted to say. She did mention, and I was waiting for her to say something about the food, but maybe she'll bring it up. In fact, I'll wait a little bit, that'll give us more time. She mentioned, uh, that Joey got a job at Canisius College? I don't even know anything about this place. I was going through the archives, searching for Cynthia Wiggins and other racism, white supremacy in Buffalo. Canisius College, they have a letter where the students, for what, I don't even know what happened, but something took place on the campus of Canisius College in 1996 that was so egregious, uh, that students, faculty, staff felt compelled to take out an entire page ad denouncing the acts of bigotry in quotes, and signing their names, and saying, you're not welcome here, and all. I mean, it was a lot, whole page for whatever took place. I have to go back and do some more digging. If anybody wants to search, it, I believe it's 1996, sometime 1996. Something happened significant, white supremacy related at Canisius College in New York. That's a, see, that's what I mean, research project. Next, anything else? Teresa explained there had been a lot of racial tension in the city schools at the time, the early 1970s, because of the new integration policies. And Nick let Joe drive, because there was a lot of fighting on the bus. Now, I mean, you already, or I guess a lot of people may not know, uh, so-called busing, and, oh, the niggers are coming, and all the rest of it. This is discussed extensively in the book we'll be talking about on Sunday, which is all about the history of racism, white supremacy in Buffalo, which starts with Cynthia Wiggins, even though it totally ignores Joseph G. Christopher. This book is specifically about Buffalo and white supremacy from like 1930 to the 1990s. So, it goes right through this time period, does not mention Christopher's name at all. And there's even a police slowdown in all this, so there's many angles where it could have been covered. Totally ignored, can't wait for Sunday. Uh, Christopher had rather been almost the antithesis of aggression, much to his father's chagrin. That, what does it mean to be a white man? Guns, lumberjacking, huntsman, aggression. Yeah, if, his dad is constantly, like, verbally abusive to him in public, in front of others, then I would think, yeah, he probably was physically violent. And I mean, behind closed doors, as they say? Yikes. Let's see, I think I might have time, if I can do it quickly. So, Cynthia Wiggins, we'll hear about her on Sunday in more detail, because that book starts with Cynthia Wiggins. They had thousands marching in Buffalo about racism and Cynthia Wiggins as well. Uh, so this is a conversation with Johnny Cochrane from, give you the year, March 31st, 2003. Cochrane says, "I get personally involved in just about every one of my cases." Oh, let me back up a little bit. Aside from doing the job on the cases you've had for you, what is the most, what is the emotional content invested in some of the more heart-wrenching cases you've taken on, such as Leonard Deadwilder? We talked about that with O.J. Simpson? Cynthia Wiggins, and the New Jersey Four? Cochrane, "I get personally involved in just about every one of my cases. My emotional investment tends to be very high, because these cases often involve a death or grievous injury, as in Amadou Diallo, Abner Louima, or Patrick Dorfman, or Taisha Miller. In each of these cases, I just didn't want to get some financial settlement that wouldn't be enough. I wanted to bring about some change. I wanted to see real justice done. Typical of these cases is a case I tried in Buffalo, New York several years ago. I worked with a great lawyer named Robert Perk. We represented the minor son of a young woman named Cynthia Wiggins, who was run over and killed while crossing a main street on her way to work at the Galleria Mall. She was crushed by a truck, dump truck, on a day when the snow was piled so high, the bus couldn't let her off on the sidewalk. The only reason she was dropped off in the street was because the mall refused to allow this bus, which typically carried passengers from the lower-class section of Buffalo East Side, black people, into the mall. At the same time, they permitted tourist buses from Canada to drop off passengers at the front entrance. We sued the mall, the driver of the truck, and the bus company. After a week of trial, we settled for several million dollars. That particular bus route now goes right into the mall." Much more that could be said about this case, and I posted articles on it, but I mean, and they even have, they got reports where white officials admitted that they deliberately did not have these buses going in, because they did not want niggers from East Side Buffalo, where that Tops grocery store, we didn't want them niggers up at Galleria Mall. Cynthia Washington Wiggins, excuse me, dead. Anyway, we'll be back next week in Chapter 12. Hope it is constructive, worthy of your time and energy. Sobriety would be best under conditions of white supremacy. We need to protect that brain computer. In addition to being sober, if you're out and about, it could be Joey. Be alert. If you didn't leave your residence prepared to kill and/or die, exit. And take it serious. If you get any thoughts like, ooh, I'm getting that vibe, that this person is weird, or dangerous, or both, take it serious. If you're in a vehicle, vehicle, you're sober, buckled, and not on a mobile device. We need all of our attention to be alert about what is happening around us. And we're trying to minimize contact with enforcement officers as best we can, badge or no. That said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time. Replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cal signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.